All right, good evening and welcome to the January 15th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. I'm Mayor Debbie Burtland and welcome everyone to a new year. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Good evening. Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Saleem Nees.
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Andrell.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Bassett. Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Wendy Wyker. Councilmember David Wiesentiner.
Here.
And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Great, thank you. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda. And City Manager Julie Underwood has informed me the agenda needs to be amended to include, under regular business, a new item number four. And what is now marked as item four will move to item five. The new item four will be the consideration and potential adoption of an emergency ordinance establishing interim design and concealment standards for deployment of small cell facilities. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
First and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has passed. The City Council will now recess into executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 4230-1101G for 60 minutes. The council is not expected to take final action after this executive session. All right, it is 5:03. Okay, council is returning from executive session. And thanks to everybody who's here and welcome to the first council meeting for 2019. At the beginning, as we always do, we approved the agenda. We did approve a modified agenda. So for those of you who plan to stay for the duration this evening, we have added one item to our regular business. It is the new item number four and it will be AB 5526. Adoption of an emergency ordinance establishing interim design and concealment standards for deployment of small cell facilities. So that will be the new item four, followed by item five, which will be the Q1 sustainability update. So that's the only change. So with that, again, we're just coming out of executive session, no decisions were made. We now have a study session that we will be going through, Agenda Bill 5525, which is the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan Update. And for that, we welcome Parks' Operations Superintendent Paul West, Acting Parks' Recreation Director Ryan Daly, and Parks' Director Jesse Bond plus one, who's here with new, new baby. So congratulations. So with that, I think I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Ryan and to Paul. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, we will be discussing the Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan, sort of a status report. Paul West, Parks Superintendent slash Project Manager is here. Juliette Vong from HBB Landscape Architecture, gosh, that's a tough word, and Mariette Ovier. I said that one perfect, too.
Almost.
Almost?
Merritt.
Merritt. Oh, I'm so sorry. So we'll be moving forward with that. And Paul, can I steal the mouse?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so to get us started, actually, Paul, you're leading off anyways.
All right. So the purpose of this master plan is, as I think of it, threefold. One is we want a document that reflects the community's needs and their desires for this park. We also want a document that reflects a consensus that the city has with Washdot, who is the major landowner in this park. And that's, to me, as important because without Washdot's consent for this plan, the plan has very little weight. And the third purpose of this plan is to guide us in the future for improvements or just capital reinvestment and operations in the park. And we have many needs for that, which I will go into here in just a moment. If you look at the slide, you can see that the park has changed a great deal in the last 25 years. It was a fairly raw site in 1992 when landscaping went in. It, you know, hundreds and hundreds of trees were planted, shrub beds were planted, and that has all grown over the last 25 years to create a fairly lush landscape. But this landscape has a life cycle. It is a capital asset, just like any other capital asset, needs reinvestment. And we're seeing a life cycle coming up here with the attrition of trees and shrubs and turf issues and so forth, as well as, you know, attrition, or rather, capital infrastructure needs for pathways and trails and sports facilities. So the aging infrastructure has led us to contemplate this plan. And then the advent of Sound Transit and the King County North Mercer Sewer Interceptor were catalysts, really, because these are two huge projects that are coming in very quickly now. And they're occupying the park in some fashion. The King County Sewer Project is going to be tearing up half of the bike trail or the multipurpose trail in order to install their new sewer line. And this is an opportunity for us to look at what is needed in terms of upgrades or standard revisions for that trail. And that alludes to the third, a third need why we're here is that we really have changing needs going forward into the future. As you know, bike commuting has increased greatly in the last 20 years. And now we have the advent of e-bikes and other forms of mobility that are using the trail that we want to accommodate. We don't want to discourage that, but we need a trail that can handle it. And we have new standards that can do that if we look to them for implementation. So that's a piece of this planning. Go for it. It is not rolling. There we go. So again, here's the, here's another comparison. Even in, even since 1999, we, you know that we've had a lot of growth in town center. The town center build-out is continuing. And with the commuter parking initiatives and the sculpture gallery being looked at for some reassessment, these are also pieces that feed into a master plan. So what is, what is actually a master plan? It's a long-term vision. It is not, it is not a drawing that can be constructed. It is really more conceptual. And it's, it's really mostly about process and gaining consensus document. So it starts out very conceptual, just gathering information and input from the community and from interest groups and agencies that are involved. And from that, we get kind of a blob, a blob diagram, which shows kind of where issues are, where things could go, where things, you know, are problematic. And that gets refined over time and with more input from the public and from agencies and other interest groups to something that's still pretty conceptual. At the end of this, we won't have like, well, this swing set goes here. There's still a lot of design that needs to happen, but this at least allows us to estimate the costs of things to a level where we can start to budget for them. Now, the master plan doesn't, it doesn't obligate us to implement any of these capital projects, but it at least allows us to look at what the capital priorities are. And, and then the other benefit for that is that we then get to go out for grants with the support of the master plan and we get to go to the state for appropriations with the support of the master plan. So it provides a means for additional revenues down the road. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to talk a little bit about the related projects.
Yeah, obviously, within this area, Aubrey Davis occupies such a large section along I-90. There are a number of projects that are in that work area. The Sculpture Gallery, Community Parking, which is at the Tully site, Sound Transit Light Rail Station, and the King County Sewer Project, which is taking place within there. And Paul noted on, on quite a few of those earlier. And this is, this is sort of where we're at currently within the process. Site analysis was done. We're sort of in the middle of the vision and programming phase and then working through with the schematic design, preferred master plan, and then we want to be and will be adopting this hopefully by December 2019. And with that, I will pass it along to Juliette or Merritt.
So we looked at existing site conditions through many different lenses. We looked at programming to really understand how the different parts of the park are being used currently and really tried to understand who the users are. Are users with limited mobility included? Do the playground, playgrounds have any features that are geared towards users with disabilities? We looked at it through SEPTED principles to really see if the site is or the park is welcoming and safe to all user groups. And we studied landscape and to better understand the, the health and state of the existing landscape on the, throughout the whole corridor. We also looked at parking and really asked the question if it is sufficient to support current uses of the park. And, and we looked at connectivity first on a larger, larger scale, the regional trail connection, but also looked at the existing park and connections within the park and throughout the surrounding neighborhoods. Then we looked at different standards.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt. Benson, you actually had a question?
I'm sorry, you know, I, on the previous slide, there's an acronym, CPTED. What is that?
SEPTED. Prime Prevention Through Environmental Design.
Okay, thank you.
So we looked at different standards and ASHTO Trail Standards suggest or recommend a 14-foot wide trail width to accommodate families with small kids all the way through the Fast and Furious commuter bikers and then all the different users with different skills and abilities in between those two user groups. We also looked at Washdot standards. And while the 10-foot wide trail section is the absolute minimum, a 12-foot wide trail is recommended with two-foot shoulder condition at either side. With, then we also reached out to public to get a better understanding of their likes and dislikes and how the site is used. And we also interviewed city maintenance staff to, to get a better understanding of their current maintenance practices and, and see what's working, what's not currently working. And all of those things, the site analyses through the different lenses, understanding what the standards are that we designed to, and, and public input and maintenance practices start to feed into the design alternatives that we will go into in the next phase. So with that, I hand over to Juliette.
Yep. So what I wanted to do is we wanted to give you a little bit of context of what we've been doing from just our site gathering kind of stage, the types of things we have to consider and the goal being that we really just sort of define the box of what we can design within. Washdot standards, not just from trails, but landscape, other types of standards, drainage that they have, your own city standards and, and needs and interests and what the community likes and dislikes, what their concerns are. So that gives us a box and it also gives us where we can kind of start to poke holes in the box and start to expand the possibilities. What I'm going to talk about now is the public outreach component and what we've heard so far. And then I'm going to give you a little bit of a preview of what we want to do for our first open house. So the public involvement plan is really about listening. It's about understanding and giving people an opportunity to tell us what they think, tell us what they like, what they don't like, what they're concerned about, what they like to do, what they hate doing, what they love about the park, like whatever they want to tell us. It's our chance to listen to what they have to say before we really go off and design anything. It's also equally about us being able to inform the public. So we want the opportunity to be able to convey back to people what we heard, what we think we heard, how we're going to use it, how we respond to their interests and comments and ideas. And ultimately, we want it to be inclusive. And so what we have here is just a bunch of different methods for reaching out to community members. And these methods are structured around the different events that we have planned throughout the process. And so we have, what we're trying to do is build in some flexibility to reach the widest types of audience. So not everybody's going to go to Let's Talk, well, it's a great tool and we funnel people there, though people in the community who probably still don't know what that is. And so having a flyer that we can post at a coffee shop, go using the city's newsletter, using ListServes to try and just reach as many of those people as possible. Going into the events that we've already had, we had a series of pop-ups over the summer that city staffed. And then they were basically there to convey and let people know this project was coming. And also, we had an online survey, so they could kind of use the, that as a method and a handout to go online and ask some pretty basic questions. I talked about our process being very inclusive. You can see from who participated in that original survey. We had lots of folks over 55. If you combine our 30s and 40s and 50-somethings, that's about another 40%. So the vast majority of the people participated were certainly older adults. We didn't really be able to reach, it wasn't a method that reached younger families or kids very well. So part of the outreach moving into this open house is trying to think of, working with staff, where can we post a flyer so that more people know about it and we can reach out to some of that demographic that we haven't heard from yet? Having said that, we had great turnout, 270-some-odd people is a lot for, you know, a month or too long for a public survey, and 95% of them lived on the island. What we really asked them was pretty broad questions. We asked about programming, we asked about some of their values and how we sort of determine priorities for master plans and different events, and we asked them their preferences. At the end of the day, if you look at really what's the top of the list for all of these, it's trails. What they do on a trail, trails within parks, connecting trails to regional parks, having bikes on trails, you know, people walking their dogs on trails. Trails just historically appeals to the widest audience. So in a large community-based survey, it's fairly typical to actually see trails pretty close to the top, but it's such a key component of Aubrey Davis Park that I think that just reinforces how important it is to the community. Outside of that, I think landscape was kind of, is often actually more towards the bottom. People don't recognize it as much as the value as what we around the table here perceive, but in this case, it was right up next to trails. And as we've gone through the public process, I really see a lot of people latching on to the character of this park as being really unique and, and kind of treasuring and cherishing that. So certainly preserving and making the trail safe, preserving the character in the landscape and improving it. And then ultimately, if you look at those guiding principles, it's a lot about safety, safety and the environment. So those kinds of elements kind of rose to the top from the wider initial outreach. Then we went to a series of four public forums. You can see the difference, they were topic focused, they were open to the public, but we also invited specific user groups. And the idea here was to reach out to those individuals that were going to be most affected by and probably the most interested in what we had to say and giving them a chance to give us some input and some thoughts, like right off the bat. So we had user groups, we had athletic, the athletic groups, we had a lot of neighbors come, and some of the neighbors came to every single one of them. We had people very much invested in this park. And so we had guided discussions. We asked them what they liked, what they didn't like, and what some of their ideas were. I'm not going into detail on each one of these, but I just wanted to highlight a few of them. So what we did is we took all the individual comments, it's all posted on Let's Talk, but we, basically, we did a word cloud from all the comments we received at each of these ones. And so for those of you who aren't as familiar in the audience, the word cloud basically just is a program that whatever word got mentioned the most gets to be biggest. And so you can see where sort of the, the ideas all coalesce around certain topics or themes. So trails, obviously, connections, that's kind of an obvious one, but you see a lot of safety, you see a lot of intersections and pedestrians and different types of users. At the end of the day, we, we had kind of proposed and threw out there that a wider trail was needed for just the variety of users. And there was a lot of head nodding in the public forum. We had suggested a 14-foot wide trail with two-foot shoulders, and, and we're saying this is the preferred, but while I say it's the preferred at the end of the day in the public forum, I think everyone recognized that a wider trail would be needed to satisfy all the users, but there were a lot of caveats that came with that. So things like separating users where we can, so we don't necessarily have to have a 14-foot wide trail everywhere. Or thinking about the trail experience along the way and how does that trail modify to reinforce a certain type of trail experience that were created. So what we did is we said for the east portion of the park, that 14-foot wide trail really was preferred, and we kind of took it for a little bit higher level of detail to feed in with the King County project. But really, for the rest of the west side, it's very much kind of an influx of, of an idea, but not necessarily a recommendation of how it's applied through the lidded park component. And so we've talked about that a little bit in the past. And then the last thing out of that trails was really a lot about safety, safety and connectivity being very important. For the sports and boating, it was, it was a lot about improving what's existing. It's heavily used park, but it's also very constrained, and I think people recognize that. New uses that were proposed were a little bit more family-oriented, things like picnic, picnic shelters, places to have parties, places to have events and gatherings, things that aren't quite as obvious in such a heavily programmed part. And these really focused on the lidded component of the park itself. We also had one.
I'm new, this microphone. The question, you reference areas A, B, and C?
Yeah.
Are those somewhere on a map that we could look at?
They are, and I can show you where they're at in a little bit. Basically, A, B, and C refers to the sports fields. So they're divided in area A, B, and C. Area C is the soccer fields at the lowest kind of level of the park, closest to the west. Area B is kind of the portion in the middle that's more unprogrammed. And then area A is the ball fields up by the tennis courts. So, and I've got some aerials, I can point that out later. And I can certainly come back and go through some of these slower if you're more interested, but we wanted to give plenty of time for discussion since we're starting a little bit on the later side. So the landscape and open space was its own topic. A lot of, and this is where a lot of what we heard about the character, just the quality of the experience being in the park, the maturity of the trees, the, the types of vegetation being very important. And a lot of what we heard back was to maintain that character, but also that it's overgrown a lot, so there's a lot of places where visibility, safety, security, sightlines are not really what they used to be and that there's some improvements that would just make it feel even that much better. And then arts and culture was kind of a fun one. It gave a chance for people to really broaden their perspective and think pretty big and kind of came up with some crazy ideas. But if you kind of coalesce everything we heard, it's a lot of, I think, the island is certainly a place that recognizes the value of arts and culture, you're a very arts-rich community. When we asked people what they thought about that and how you would translate that into the park, there was a lot of different ideas. I think the, what came to the top was the idea of integrating and really interacting with public art in, in a park setting makes a lot of sense as opposed to like a more visual art from the gallery itself. And to make sure that it's not overpowering. There was a lot of great ideas about art, but it still is a park that's loved the way it is, and we don't want to completely change that character from, from what people really appreciate today. So that then fed into a lot of discussion on Let's Talk. There's still a lot of discussion on Let's Talk, which is great. And Let's Talk is a primary component of the public outreach as a funnel for that discussion to be able to continue. We pulled out just a couple of quotes, just as examples, but there's certainly been a hefty amount of discussion going back and forth. It is also a very transparent forum, which is great. It's been allowed to, public to be able to comment and the city to be able to offer feedback. And we, as consultants, also get every single comment that comes into Let's Talk is funneled, obviously, the city, but they forward it to us as well. So it's a constant feedback mechanism as we're thinking about alternatives for us to be able to remind ourselves what the people are talking about as well. This is also our main component of where we post information. So everything we've created, everything we discussed in all of the public forums, all of the survey results is posted and will continue to be posted as we move throughout the process. So I was going to go into the open house number one and just talk a little bit about what our intent is for that open house. And then I want to get into specifics of the actual vision, goals, and objectives. That's a main component of what we're going to talk about in the open house. So the open house will be both online and in person. It's coming up February 7th. And so the outreach and the noticing is starting now in order to kind of start to get the word out. It is intended to engage a wider audience, so we're not showing alternatives at this point. We really have only interacted with kind of a blind public in the pop-ups, right? People doing online surveys without seeing anything. And in these public forums, which was kind of a focus group of individuals. So the idea is to go to this larger open house, online and in person, and get the wider island audience to come talk to us about essentially the same things as what we did in the public forum. The public forum helped us inform the vision and the goals significantly. It helped us identify opportunity areas and get some ideas of types of uses that people might want to see improved or done in the park. But the forum is a way for us to, or the open house is a way for us to validate that with the larger community. So it's to create a similar dialogue. We will have the vision statement up as, as one station. We'll use programming in the open space and the aerials that you'll see later as kind of our, our way of, of testing ideas for what to do in the park itself. And then we'll have a whole component on trails. We are working to also get a component of the open house that way to relate to some of those kind of neighboring and adjacent projects, the King County Project, the Sound Transit Project. So people who do come, even if it's not quite just for the Aubrey Davis Park, there is some information on these other relevant projects. So the vision, you guys have maybe read this already. I'll pause.
So just a clarification, when you say this is the vision, is this something that will be discussed or has this been somehow determined? Or is this part of an existing document?
This is a vision for Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan. It has been developed as a draft based on the public forums predominantly and the, and some of the outcomes of the pop-up survey. We're presenting it tonight in, in detail, essentially in its entirety, for you guys to give us a chance to comment and feedback and see if this aligns with some of what you've heard or what you might think about for the park. Ultimately, what we would like to do is we would present this at the open house and offer suggestions and comments. So for example, it would be on a board at the open house, we'd say, hey, here's a vision, goals, and opportunities. What do you think? What's missing? And give people a chance to interact.
So it's still draft, and there's still the opportunity, and there'll be multiple opportunities for the public to weigh in?
Yep. And even if they don't come to the first open house, it would be online and it would carry forward. And even as a vision and goal statement, as you go through a process, even these tend to change over time. You get to a preferred alternative and people really have, have kind of solidified what they think the park should be. These goals and objectives might change even as late as that. Where this was really driven out of is that it's, it's kind of a gem. The existing facility, everything we've heard, it just is such a great place to be and it's such a unique place, both on the island as well as in the region, that overwhelmingly we wanted to, people have wanted it to retain that existing character. And so the goal with this vision statement is just to basically say, we recognize this is important. It's important to the community and it's important as it currently exists, but we understand that there is an experience there that could still be improved. There's certainly improvements to make it safer, to make it more engaging, and ultimately to make it, to make it inclusive. to make it inclusive. And then, at the end of the day, it should be a place for all. And so that starts to give us the opportunity to talk about accessibility, to talk about flexibility, to talk about how it can affect and change to increase uses, to appeal to a wider variety of users. And it gives us a lot of opportunity to mold and refine the design as we go and still stay very clearly within this vision. Outside of the vision, we then created a series of goals and objectives. So there's a goal related to each of our four main topic areas, and then a series of objectives are really just kind of statements that help address what that goal is about. So I was going to go through all of them, and then if I need to pause at that point for questions, it might be a good time to do that, or I can keep going.
Well, I'm just, I think I'm going to look to Paul and Ryan. We will go a little bit long because we started late, but let's make sure that you can articulate, and there's plenty of time for us to get to whatever it is you, whatever level of feedback it is that you need from council. So I'm not going to say to go into each one, I'm just going to look to you to manage the time, knowing that we probably have until about 7:05.
We're about halfway through, is that?
Well, we have until about 7:05, so.
So I think what I'd like to do is I'll just kind of quickly highlight these. There's only a few more slides after this, and then we can come back to this. I think the main feedback we're really looking for is anything you're concerned about or comments on how we, and what we're maybe proposing to bring to the open house. But in particular, these goals, objectives, and vision statements would be where we'd really look for feedback from the council. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, just to be frank, I think what you're going to get is some initial feedbacks, but again, this is the first that the council's really reviewing it. So the extent to which we can provide, you know, deep and considered conversation and have had the chance to talk to neighbors, friends, and family, you know, it's going to be just, I think, pretty high level at this point.
And that's perfectly fine. We just wanted a chance for you guys to give some feedback before we went to the general public open house and said, hey, here it is, guys, what do you think? We will say, we can certainly say draft on a lot of these materials as well, though, I think, which is a comment that I'm taking back. So I'll just quickly kind of go through the thought process behind each of these. So I'll give you the high level. This first one is really about programming. The goal is to enhance what's there, because there's not a lot of flexibility to provide a lot of new uses on a lidded condition, but to be flexible in how what's there can be used. So what are the ways we can add more users? We can get some events, we can make it more compatible with how these places are used today versus how they were used 20 years ago. And to make them year-round. So we've been looking at ADA, different ages and age groups, different ways to play that are different today than what they used to be, different family-type activities that respond to different ethnic groups that have different ways that they all recreate. And also thinking about both, you know, the commuter that moves through the park, but how to really blend and balance the commuter and the regional context of this park with the local context and needs as well. So the statements, we're trying to kind of relate around those main categories. The second one is about the landscape. And so this is really talking about that it retains its natural character. That's the main goal. That's what we've heard overwhelmingly to date. But within that, we want it to stay healthy. We've heard a lot of opportunities, and we want to be able to improve the ecology, education, the function of the landscape. It has a function, it should be able to continue to function, and to make sure it's safe. The trail has its own set of goals and objectives, and so this is a lot about appealing to all users to improve the experience and recognize that the experience is different for different types of users and to ultimately make it safe, and then to recognize both the regional and local level of the trail. And then arts and culture is really about expanding the opportunities to enhance the character and the sense of space and just the feeling of a place with arts and culture, but that it ultimately is still a park, and so it's a balance between that and using arts and culture to create a place. So at the open house, we'll have these up, and like I said, we're basically just saying, hey, here's a draft. What do you think? Are we missing anything? Does this resonate with you? What's missing, or how would you like to change these statements? And where it helps us in the long run is it really is, it is the priorities. It's the focus or the lens that we then evaluate alternatives to make sure we're meeting all of these goals. So we don't propose something that doesn't meet these core principles in anything that we would put forward. For the open house, basically then we have a series of kind of programmatic questions and examples that we'll provide. I'm just giving you a snapshot so you can see what we would be showing at the open house. We've divided the park into a series of different opportunity areas. We'll show each area in larger detail, and through the focus groups, they really gave us mostly comments related to these areas we bubbled as opportunity areas. And then we're just leaving it blank to ask people at the open house, what do you think? What would you like to add or change? And so it gives a space for everybody to provide their own input, but we're also showing them examples of different types of uses that you could have, both what's existing now as well as what it could look like. And then each one of these uses will have kind of an icon. So you can take in the open house, you can literally take the icon and say, I want more playgrounds here, and be able to show us both locationally where they want to see different activities improved, and then also help us prioritize which activities they actually want to see. So then the last segment of the open house will be on the trail. We have an overall key map of the trail alignment. And then we want to go into, really on the east, we have a preferred trail section, which is the 14-foot wide and the two-foot shoulders, but we've applied that section primarily to the east. So we'll show examples similar to what you saw at the last update on what that looks like on the trail corridor itself. And at the end of the day, we want to be, we will also provide a mock-up similar to what we had the last council meeting, so people can physically stand in the space and see what fits or doesn't fit in 10 feet versus 14 feet versus shoulders or no shoulders. It gives them a real-world perspective. And then essentially what we're going to be asking them to do is say, we've taken this preferred section and we've applied it to the east. What do you think? What's missing? Does it seem like it works? Now, how do we take something and apply it to the west? What should we really do? What should we consider for the trail through the west? Because that has a lot more potential for alternatives. And so we want to get more input on, is it the same section? Does it need to be something different? How is it modified based on that different type of a context? And then with that, I figure we'd open it up for questions.
Great. Dave, you're leaning in, then Dave, Saleem, Bruce. No, I got to write it down. Okay.
So thanks very much for the coverage of so many different topics. You know, I've had a personal interest in the east-west trail portion of the park, and it is, you know, really an east-west corridor for a lot of commuting activity by bicycle. And it seems like that's, you know, getting more and more, and some of the, some of the slopes are fairly significant, so you can kind of get going. And then, you know, there is, there's user, not conflict, but there's user interaction. And so I'm wondering what you're anticipating, since this is a master plan, and I guess it covers a decade or two decades in the future, as you anticipate that traffic getting heavier, both for walkers and dog people and cyclists, and now we have the advent, we see a lot of e-bikes there. Can you walk us through what the thinking is for managing that in a way that anticipates increased volumes of all those kinds of users?
So from a master plan perspective, what we're trying to do at this stage in the process is just understand who all those users are and what that experience should be. What is it now? Where are the conflict zones? Where is the speed? Where is the concern? Where's the perceived problems as well as the kind of real problems, because sometimes those are not always the same? And then come up with a recommendation. So we're starting with the 14 feet because that is the regional trail standard. That is kind of the widest-used standard for a trail of this kind of capacity with these number of users. But there's a lot of flexibility. And so at the end of the day, this public process, we want to get out of this is what should that trail section look like from one end of the corridor to the other? How is it changed? Where is it separated? Where is it combined? Does it go somewhere else entirely as a bypass route, which is one of the recommendations out of the public forum? What does that look like? So what we would have is we'd have a line on a plan and a series of sections that truly defined what we expected that trail to be in the long run. Now, that's, again, implementation varies, right, from funding and who can do what. We have a segment in King County that has certainly a greater chance of it's being torn up, something's going to have to go back in. So there's a lot more discussion being focused on the east segment initially to feed into their process. But we need to have that same level of discussion for the west segment, and that's what we'll start into after this open house. So we're looking for this first open house for people to give us feedback of what they think, where are the problem areas. We've heard a lot through the forums, but there might still be things that are missing. And then we go and we provide alternatives. So for example, one alternative might be a completely different bypass route. Trail goes somewhere else entirely, it's not even through the main lidded portion of the park. That's one extreme. Another extreme is, someone might say, you know what, 14 feet isn't even wide enough. We want all the shoulders, we want the whole nine yards, and it's going to go right through the lidded park. That's a completely other extreme. At the end of the day, where we expect it to fall is something that really is a hybrid, not so extreme on either end, but something that really makes sense for balancing the needs between the different user groups. And then there will be a line on a plan that shows where the trail is and how wide it is at different segments throughout the whole park. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, counsel, just for ease, I think we're going to just go right down the line, and I'll come back and go last. So Bruce.
Thank you. I appreciated the diagram, the different levels of cyclist in this, and I think that's a helpful thing for us to be keeping in mind, this idea that cyclists come in a lot of different shapes and sizes and expectations. When I got to the proposed vision statement, I was struck by the fact that it didn't mention trails or a transportation element, travel element to this. And I think of many parks as being sort of destination points, that you travel to the park and then you do things in the park. But Aubrey Davis is really a different kind of creature in that it is a, it is first a travel corridor for people. And then second, it has enough breadth to it to be a space that works for other uses. And so it seems to me that we need to be thinking about how it's unique in that respect as we try and put this together, rather than thinking of it with a vision statement that is more of a destination-based vision statement. And then as I, I think about the, back to the cyclists again, as somebody who exercises and rides around the island and who sees a lot of other people cycling who are serious cyclists, I certainly favor not having those folks anywhere near our, you know, young kids who are trying out trails, people who are walking dogs with leashes and all those kinds of things. And so to the extent that we can really separate out those uses and create more of a slow-paced separation, I'm in favor of that.
I think that's actually a very good comment on the transportation for the vision statement.
I'll agree with that. And I do, I do wonder why there is a phrase in here that says, separate on-road bicycle route for fast experienced riders, if this is an Aubrey Davis master plan, and that's contemplating something outside of Aubrey Davis, doesn't really belong in this vision statement. So I'll just leave that there. The issue that I have is that in the main kind of preamble to the vision bullets, we say Aubrey Davis Park should be a place that feels welcoming and accessible, retaining its open and natural character. And then we have multiple bullets, bullet two, paragraph two, two bullets, create and enhance public views into the park and to the lake or mountains beyond, and improve sightlines and visibility in and within the park. And so my experience, especially when you look at a vision statement, it's one page, when you have that much text about sights and vistas and views and sightlines, that it becomes implied to the master plan to clear things out that are tall. If you go to this site, you see the topography of the lid and up by the smokestacks. You have great vistas, you don't need to clear anything out to have a great view. If you have, you know, different points in the park, Upper Luther Riverbank, the lid above Luther Riverbank, you have a lot of sightlines that are not, that are not interdicted by vegetation, they're enhanced by it. We talk a lot about the edges of the forest, and when I see somebody talking about a park that has forest in it, and then referencing it as the edges of the forest and understory, it makes me think they don't think there is any of that in the park. So if there is none of that, I guess, fine, but why are you talking about understory and improving it if there's not any overstory protecting it, right? So I would say, as you go through your visioning process and as you have those conversations with the public, your word clouds don't reference these things. I don't see these being big bullets, and, you know, if a park user wants to come and have a great view, I think they're getting it. I don't think it needs improvement in that respect, but that would be my caution there.
Okay, thank you. Benson.
Just a couple of comments and what have you. I guess, you know, looking at the demographics of the people that responded to your survey, you know, certainly, I think you indicated in your presentation that you would like to have, you know, perhaps younger, another chance of getting younger respondents. I would encourage you, if you haven't, to at least reach out to the school district and to the PTA. I mean, you might be able to get a different perspective as far as use goes from a younger audience. You know, as far as the vision and goals, I was glad, I was curious about who drafted it, and so you indicated that you folks did with the input of the public focus groups, apparently. And I was just curious whether or not you've had any kind of, is this the first time anybody has seen the, okay, so even the focus groups have not seen it?
No, it was drafted based on what we heard from the focus group, but this is the very first time anyone has kind of laid eyes outside of staff and our design team. So it's just the first blush at what those vision statements might be.
Okay. And so obviously, this is free for people to comment on and suggest changes, what have you?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I'm not going to delve into specific changes, but I did see that in goal and objectives three, this whole issue about wayfinding, and I think that's crucial. And I don't know if you envision the wayfinding, obviously it needs to be uniform, but whether or not it goes beyond Aubrey Davis Park into the town center. I know that there's been discussions periodically about the need for wayfinding in order to direct people to the town center. So anyway, with respect to the wayfinding issue, that's something that you might want to take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Lisa.
Hi. Hi, thank you for this very thorough presentation. It's a lot of information to process, and it's all very interesting. I will start by saying that I use Aubrey Davis Park seven days a week. I love it. I know it pretty well in the sections that I use. So I have, I have two comments and then maybe two questions. The comment is, I do think that separating high-speed bikes, if possible, is a component of a master plan because it does impact the quality of the other users of the park's experience. And so I kind of think that it belongs there. I also think, in my view, the master plan should recognize its function as a transportation corridor, but I think it should prioritize people who use it as a destination, because those are likely the Mercer Island residents, more heavily weighted. And then I have, the question is, first question is whether a 14-foot wide trail really, and I can tell you, you will know my view when I ask this question, does it really preserve the park-like experience, the nature and experience? And it feels really wide to me. So that's kind of a rhetorical question. And then the actual question is, can you just talk for a minute about the purpose of a gravel shoulder and the different widths there that would be as one of the options?
Yeah. So I think that for the first rhetorical question, it is a good question, that's why you mock it up. You kind of let people see and feel, if you put two bikes and a kid in a stroller, how many, can you really pass comfortably? And I think it goes to that idea of the separation of users. And the eastern portion, where there's nowhere else for people to go, I think it really does fit, and you'll start to see when you look at the photos and you look at the example mocked up in a room, you need a decent amount of space in order to really feel comfortable with the number of bikes that come through that trail. Where you have room to separate users, like on the lidded park, I think there's more flexibility. And that's what we're going to be looking for feedback at the open house for. For the shoulders themselves, the purpose of the gravel shoulders are kind of, there's a couple of things. No matter how wide the trail is, some people are just not comfortable seeing someone coming towards them, like, period. Doesn't matter how wide it is, they might not be comfortable with those faster bikes or a whole group of bikes coming through, or, you know, a bunch of kids on their skateboards with, you know, the dog and the stroller coming behind. What the two-foot shoulder does is it gives them a place to just get out of the way. No matter how many people are in the trail, there's a spot they can feel comfortable. There is a group of people, the trail itself is paved. There is a group of people, the trail itself is paved, the other component is there's certainly a desire in a lot of communities and to just have a softer surface to jog on, to walk on, that you don't always want to be on a paved surface, and so it gives more flexibility for where people want to go and how they want to recreate. And then the other option is, the other purpose of that gravel shoulder is to keep essentially a clear zone of low vegetation or low material to no material, so that anyone on the trail itself doesn't get caught up on things that can start to grow or encroach into that trail surface. So it's that extra space on the side of the trail. If a bike is truly on an edge of a trail, there's nothing that could catch and create accidents within themselves. So that two feet can be, in some cases, it's paved for maintenance purposes, because you're next to a wall, whatever reason you might want it paved. In some cases, it's gravel, in some cases, it's mulch or other kind of like lawn or grass material. It just has to be very low in order to have that clear zone.
Okay, oh, thanks, that's helpful. And I guess the other thing that I would consider is the extent to which the wider trail promotes higher speeds by wheeled vehicles of any kind. And, you know, the balance with safety there is, it's great if everybody can fit, but if it encourages people to go faster really than is safe while they're passing a pedestrian or a dog, if it's gonna be multi-use trail, I think I would, I personally favor the slowing factor that a narrower trail brings to bear.
And the two are not necessarily mutually exclusive, so even a wider trail, you would still want to implement signage, traffic calming, you, you know, big, you know, wider or narrower, a long route that is downhill, that turns quickly, is going to be a traffic concern, no matter how wide or narrow the trail is, so they don't have to be mutually exclusive.
So just for everybody who's in the room, we did get started on our study session a little bit late, so we'll be going for about another five or six minutes. And there are plenty of seats, so if you wanna go ahead and move on in, please do so. But with that, Wendy?
Okay, so I will say too, there are areas of the trail where you can't go 14 feet, so there are already some constraints. So my, so I agree with everything my colleagues have said, and my particular interest in feedback is in section five, or segment five. We have light rail coming, we have that parking ride, we have the Tully site, we have connectivity to the town center, and I'd like to hear from the public what they think about connectivity to Luther Burbank Park, because that's the access to the waterfront. And I see further on, you have a map that has some dotted lines and some solid lines, and I don't know if that's for high speed or low speed or recreation or dog walking, but if we could clarify kind of that whole area of connectivity, there's a lot happening there and a lot of interest and a lot of use in that particular area, so what can you do to make that better, safer, and more user-friendly?
Okay, so at the open house, we'll have a segment just for that area, where it's nice and wide to be able to have those discussions.
Amen, thank you.
Great, well, I'm gonna take a turn. I am. And then definitely, if anybody has some last points that they want to clarify, we'll go with that and then wrap up. So, my comment is, first of all, great presentation, thorough. One of the things that strikes me about Aubrey Davis Park is, in my mind, it is not a singular park. You know, it is very different things in very different places, and we've alluded to it in the sense that in some places, it seems to be a transportation corridor, in some places, it's, you know, people gathering with dogs, it's sports fields, it's playgrounds. So it's many things to different people, and the extent to which it's sort of monolithic in the vision statement, to me somehow misses a little bit of, I think, what is special about it. Bruce made an interesting comment. He talked about it first as a travel corridor, and then I think another council member elaborated on the extent to which, I think it's a travel corridor for people who are crossing Mercer Island and/or going from Mercer Island someplace else. I think it's very much a destination for a number of the people, the residents who either live proximate or who are actually traveling to certain amenities. So to me, that's an interesting point, the extent to which it's a corridor, the extent to which it's a destination, I think is not necessarily clear. So, I do have a sort of a technical question that I would appreciate getting some clarification on. When we first embarked on this master plan conversation several years ago, one of the questions was clarifying ownership, land ownership, particularly at certain key intersections. Has that been done and/or somewhere can we get a map that identifies what is city, what is WashDOT, and/or something else, so that we can see the various domains of control or influence?
Yes, we have that information. Now, we'd have had a quite extensive conversation with WashDOT about, their property services group has actually given us a lot of information about what is their ownership and what is ours, and we can provide that map.
Any big surprises or interesting points that came out?
Let's see, nothing very surprising, other than, you know, King County tends to treat every piece of state land as DNR property, so that, you know, that's kind of just an error in, on King County's database, but no, nothing particularly interesting, other than there's some properties, there's some parcels at the East Mercer Way interchange that are owned by WashDOT, and we're still researching where, whether they're conservation areas or are available for, for some kind of park use. And so there's a little bit, there's still a little bit of work to do there. Everything else, I think, is pretty well resolved at this point.
That's new, clarify.
Yeah, just a follow-up. Aside from ownership, can you talk about the maintenance? Who actually maintains those properties?
Well, I wanna caveat that with, we are running late, so if that's gonna turn into a long answer...
That's a, that's a whole study session, really.
It's a short answer. City maintains.
Yeah, I mean, the general rule is that WashDOT owns almost all the land, and the city maintains it under contract with WashDOT.
Okay.
So I wanted to clarify my earlier point about this bullet, "Develop a separate on-road bicycle route for fast experienced riders to avoid conflicts." My question was, does this belong in the master plan? Because what we're contemplating is a route on North Mercer Way, I presume, which is not in Aubrey Davis. So that's my only point there.
Understood.
If what you're trying to say is that this Aubrey Davis should support something less than, you know, this super speed warrior, then put that in the master plan, knowing that this is contemplated in the TIP or somewhere else, and support it. And then overall, I would say, this does feel a little prescriptive, and I am used to vision statements being a little bit more aspirational, and so when you start saying things that are really, do this, do that, you know, that is the master plan, not the vision. So I would say, just try and step back a little bit.
Unless we need it in the plan to get funding.
Well, the master plan will be the tool for that, not the vision statement. I'm just talking about the vision statement, yeah.
Okay, counsel, we are coming to the end. Is there any other particular point you wanted to raise or a quick question for clarification? It sounds like there's a lot of material that'll be coming before us, if not even this year, then in the coming years, but a special thanks to everyone for being here, and of course, to Director Jessie Bond with her newest addition, who showed up for her first work session?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, with that, we have a great, a large crew here that I suspect is here in part for the special business that we have this evening. We're gonna take just two or three minutes to go ahead and clear the tables, and then we'll get on with the swearing-in of our new council member. So just a couple minutes. Council members, I'm gonna ask that you please come back on up. Wendy? Wendy Benson? Okay. That's why I said two to three minutes.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
We'll take a longer break after for photos and stuff, because then, because I suspect it's just quick. Okay, Wendy, if we could have you back up here?
Yeah.
I'm out, to fill my, oh, here's my script. Sorry, I was like... So we've just had a small room reset, and this evening, we have a very special item of business. As many of you will have noticed, not only is it a new year, but we have a new face up here at the dais. We are operating as a council of seven. So, as alluded to, tonight is the formal swearing-in, although not the legal swearing-in, but the public swearing-in of our new council member, Lisa Andrell. And so for that, we're gonna ask Councilmember Andrell if she would please join the city clerk in front of the dais. And for those of us who are back here, we will clear out of the view.
We'd also like to invite any of Councilmember Andrell's family to come up, if they want to join her up here, maybe be a backdrop for her.
Lots of friends and...
Lots of moral support.
Lots of friends and one family.
Having been duly appointed...
To the office of council member.
To the office of council member.
Position number four.
Position number four.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Of the city of Mercer Island.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Washington.
The laws of the state of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Okay, so this is the chance for lots of photos, and then, Lisa, if there's anything that you wanted to say, please feel free just to grab a mic.
I will. Thank you all so much for being here. It's, it's easy to pack a room when it's a small room or when you have a lot of friends, and I guess I'm lucky to have both. So, I just wanted to say, I appreciate all of your support. It's been a wild ride for three weeks since I was torn in so that I could start getting council materials, and then we did the formal ceremony today. The issues are complex and interesting, the community is so wonderful and so vibrant, and I got a great message from somebody, and she said, you know, "I'm not gonna agree with you all the time. If I wanted somebody in the office who I agreed with 100% of the time, I would've run myself." And I thought, that is just such a great perspective, and I hope that everybody feels that way, and we will most certainly not agree 100% of the time, but we will most certainly not disagree 100% of the time. And, and I think, as I said, in some of my council application materials, if we just kind of rise above the fray and try to look at all the things we share in common, the overlap of our interests in this community, the Venn diagram that we've got going for ourselves is pretty darn good, and what everybody loves here, and what everybody treasures and values, and we're gonna have differences of opinion in how to preserve those, and how to enhance those, and how to get there from where we are. But, I think it's great that I got selected. I'm really honored and excited and proud, and I think it's great that everybody's turned out and that we have such a robust and vibrant community. So, thank you all so much.
And, and council, we'll get a council picture, then council, consider this your break. We'll take five or 10 minutes.
So where we do the council picture? But, no, the closer chairs, but it's...
I want the girls in the middle.
Yeah.
I'm in a not big seat right now.
Yeah, but, you know, it's...
We need the tall, we need the tall people.
The tall people.
The tall people.
We're like, we're like...
I don't want to see that one picture, I got my first scene.
Any traffic?
Vacation, I don't know.
Vacation, I don't know.
Very good.
Four minutes counting.
I don't know where you're going.
I have this...
I call you in there.
No, I can't.
They're trying to...
Yeah, that's okay.
Gather round, we got something to take.
My passion, maybe I...
My name is Squeak.
Anything else?
Squeak, squeak, squeak.
If the shorter people move forward.
Okay, one, two, three, Lisa.
You get a little bit down.
Right there.
Yeah, just, just you.
Now I got the leg.
Is this the population council?
You can send them all to me.
You know what he's scared of?
Yeah, we're in a situation.
It's, of course, I'm still...
She just went down.
I think it's...
Why does that work?
Well, yes, it's...
She just went down.
She just went down.
I think this may have been our regulation.
There is really...
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 Bruce, have you learned anything new on your Tesla?
Anything new?
No, she's finally gotten into the habit of driving it, and so I haven't been near it in quite a while.
I need to talk to her.
How about you?
No, I'm driving it. No, I'm loving it.
Again, congrats to the Mercer Island High School marching band for their amazing Rose Bowl performance. It's really neat when I see...I get texts from friends who shoot me the picture from California saying, oh, look at your school's here! So it's really kind of quite an honor. Just really excited to see two of our staff really, I think, lead in the state of Washington on really drug and youth prevention. So Derek Franklin, our YFS Senior Programs Manager and Clinical Supervisor, along with Chris Harnish, our Mercer Island High School-based Drug and Alcohol Counselor, were invited by the Washington Healthy Youth Coalition to present on a correlation between youth use of vape and later marijuana use at their monthly meeting. Mercer Island youth, like youth nationwide, are facing a vape epidemic while both the science and regulatory controls try to catch up. Derek and Chris are part of the YFS Healthy Youth Initiative's Drug and Alcohol Task Force, which is focused on vape prevention, and so way to represent our Mercer Island youth, Derek and Chris. And congratulations to Aljoya. The Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce named Aljoya Mercer Island as its 2018 Business of the Year Award recipient. Every year, a committee of chamber representatives selects the recipient from a pool of nominees. In addition to Aljoya, nominees for this year's award included Oakarat, Carucios, the French American School, King Insurance, and S.R. Scholl &amp; Associates. So again, congratulations to Aljoya, and of course, to all of the 2018 nominees. At the January 23 Design Commission meeting, the commission will hold its second study session related to a development proposal for 1.45 acre property located at 288578th Avenue Southeast. It's currently occupied, I think many of you know, by King Insurance and the Tiger Garden Chinese, so in addition to the Mercer Island CrossFit and the Mud Bay Pet Store. The proposal includes 155 residential units and 16,000 square feet of ground floor retail. This is one of the first to be submitted under the updated Town Center Development Regulations, which were adopted in June of 2016. The applicants had their first study session with the Design Commission this past October. Application materials will be posted to the Design Commission webpage on January 17. For more information, contact Allison Van Gorpe at 206-275-7733. In addition, our Community Planning and Development will also be hosting another meeting. This one is one of many community outreach meetings to consider the creation of a city code for the proposed new zoning designation, the Community Facilities Zone. The city is looking for input from citizens for the code-writing process. The goal is to ensure that development of facilities located in the new zone would occur in a manner that is harmonious with surrounding properties. The city hosted meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January 24 at 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center. If you'd like more information, please contact Nicole Gadet at 206-275-7719. All seniors age 65 and older are invited to Beat the Blues lunch by celebrating National Suit Month, Thursday, January 17 at 12:00 p.m. at the Community Center. The fee is $5.50 per person, and enjoy blues music by Chris Stevens, as well as games and prizes. Please call to register at 275-7609. Also want to call your attention to some additional upcoming events. Youth Theater Northwest will be presenting Mary Poppins Jr. on January 18 through February 3 at the J. You can purchase tickets by visiting youththeater.org. Parent Edge will host diversity expert Rosetta Lee on Wednesday, January 23, 11:30 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. These events are free, but attendees are asked to register through Eventbrite, and you can do that by visiting miparentedge.org. And then finally, the Sister City Art and Architecture Lecture will take place on Tuesday, January 29 at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. Tickets are $15, and they can be purchased through the Mercer Island Sister City Organization. Mark your calendar for some volunteer events. We're always looking for volunteers to help us restore our native areas. Two are taking place, one on Saturday, January 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 at Homestead Park, the next one on Saturday, January 26, at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Wildwood Park. So you can either visit Friends of Homestead Park, or RSV to friendsofhomesteadpark@gmail.com, or visit earthcore.org for the Wildwood Park event. And just as a reminder, city facilities will be closed on Monday, January 21 in recognition and observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you, Julie. So next on the agenda is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the council on any item. We are taking names, so if you would like to speak during appearances, please make sure that you have signed in. We'll be calling your names in the order that they were put down on the piece of paper. We have expanded rules of public appearances on the back door, but in general, be nice, be constructive. And with that, we welcome...
We have John Harrington, Dan Thompson, Meg Lippert, and Brian Hildebrandt.
Great, super, welcome.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Harrington, and I'm here representing a group called Island Vision and also Sustainable Mercer Islands. And we want to thank the city for adopting sustainability as one of its key objectives in 2018, and we are really hoping that the city will continue this commitment in the coming year. We encourage that the city plans continue work on developing a city and community sustainable action plan, a process which the city committed to in 2012. The need for making progress on reducing city and community carbon emissions has never been greater. I think that the message out there, the evidence, the fires, the long list of harms that are coming to our region and our community is getting worse. And so the city should, and the community should really be thinking about making a stronger commitment in this area. We're very appreciative of the work of the city's Sustainability Manager, Ross Freeman. He has spent much time and effort supporting numerous city-community initiatives, especially this year's Solarise MI campaign, which led to the installation of more than 450 kilowatts of solar capacity on the island, all paid for with private dollars. However, to really make progress in reducing CO2 emissions by 80%, below 2,000 levels, which the city committed to in 2007, more financial staff and resources are required. We hope that the city will use the opportunities that will come up with the upcoming state legislative session, and hopefully there will be more funding that will become available for projects at the state and local, at the local level, which the, hopefully, the city can engage in. And there are many community members who would love to help implement those projects, and we welcome the opportunity to partner with the city in doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Daniel Thompson. I reside at 7265 North Mercer Way, and I have lived on Mercer Island since 1970. I support the Tullys Project, and MICA as part of that. I think it's an imaginative process and project, especially considering the limited funds the city has to work with. One of the fundamental issues, though, going forward is I think the emergency rezone was flawed, and I think it's vulnerable on appeal. And because of the timelines, I know that Mark and the 7,800 residents and probably our group will likely appeal that rezone, but it's not that we're against the project. What we'd like to see during the process coming forward in the next year is that there be somewhat of a better design. I think all of us would like something that better reflects a performing art center for that site. And the other one is I think that because of the way the RFQ was written, it misunderstood the northern facade and the importance of the linear park to the citizens. That is what we want to look at, the scale on that part of the facade. The other issue I'd like to talk about is the Aubrey Davis Master Plan. I've lived next to the park for the last 10 years and attended all of the focus group meetings. The presentation I heard tonight was nothing like the comments I heard at the focus group meetings, and I'm pretty in touch with the citizens. What I heard from the citizens is they are very afraid that the park they love as is is going to be changed. It's going to be regionalized. It's going to be developed. Now, the reason I think that's important is because right now, this council only has one issue, one existential issue, and that is getting the citizens to pass an MNO levy or a combo with a capital levy by 2021. We can't balance a budget, a general fund budget, with $28 million in cuts. And I think sometimes this council has misunderstood just how sensitive the citizens are towards their parks. This council in the last year rezoned two parcels of the Aubrey Davis Park, and naturally, everybody's a little nervous about that. I've tried to explain this, I think, before to the council. I don't really think anybody listens to me, but what I'm saying is, is we're going forward where we have an existential issue, truly. And I thought there were some really good comments from all of you on the Aubrey Davis Master Plan. Does the council want to wade into this and make this an issue, a park issue, a major park issue, when we have a single focal issue where we have to pass an MNO levy by 2021? We have to regroup, we have to do that. Do we want to take on a park redevelopment? I don't think was what I heard at the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Meg Lippert?
Hi, my name is Meg Lippert. I live at 405294th Avenue Southeast, and I have two issues I wanted to talk about. The first one is Aubrey Davis Park Master Plan issue, and I also attended all four focus groups, and at the outset of the focus groups, it was stated that the path would be 18 feet wide, which would be 14 feet pavement and two feet of gravel shoulder on each side. And I just wanted to show you how long and wide that actually would be, because it was hard for me to imagine this basic road going through the park. So this two feet is the amount of shoulder, and there's a knot there before the other two feet, and this is basically the width of what the path would be all the way through the park, which is almost double what a traffic lane would be, which is 10 feet wide in normal traffic lane. So it's basically putting a road right through our park. So that really, really concerns me. Thank you. Okay, I think that the best way to preserve safety is with a narrower path, as Lisa, you mentioned in the presentation, questions about the presentation. Also, I think preserving green space is an island priority, and putting such a wide path with gravel shoulders into the park does not meet that goal. And so that's one of my concerns. My second concern is in the closing of the Community Center on Sundays and limiting the hours. You were elected to represent us, and we voted for the Community Center, we paid for it, and we don't, now we're not going to be able to use it for that one day. Specifically, I'm concerned about the closure of the indoor playground on Sundays. I have a little indoor playground card here that I got from the Community Center. It's open Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays for our youngest citizens. And as a teacher and an independent school founder and a professor of education, and as a member of the preschool association, I'm concerned about the development of our youngest children. And I just wanted to share some pictures of my grandson when he played in the indoor playground and how important that was for his development. Here is the first time he was there. He's just kind of looking at it from the first floor there. When he was very young, he just was playing with the materials there. As he got older, he started actually constructing with the materials there, and as he got even older, he started actually with large motor exercise in the area. And now he's also actually playing with other children there. So depriving our citizens of this opportunity, I think, is not a wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Brian Hildebrandt?
Brian Hildebrandt, 6880 West Mercer Way. I've got a few issues for the council, but first, let's talk about the requirement for signing in before making a statement. There's red tape, and this is definitely, this seems to be textbook red tape. I think that the bar for speaking in front of the council should be set very low. I think as long as I state my name and address for the record, anyone, even if they come in at 7:38 instead of 7:15, should be able to address the council without having to sign a sheet of paper first. Continuing, I actually would also would like to weigh in on this park plan. I think it's important to have a travel corridor on which bikes can travel freely and fairly fast. I think that looking ahead and trying to limit the speed of bikes is the wrong way to think about it. Respectful bicyclists will maintain their speed at a level which is consistent with the occupation of the path. I think the state of the park right now reflects the earlier condition. There are several paths which move through the park in multiple ways. You can, and some of which, some of which are populated by pedestrians and some of which are not. The, yeah, so echoing the earlier statements, I don't, I don't necessarily feel that this, this aspect of the park has been incorporated into the, into the plan presented before the council tonight. One other thing I did want to say, I want, I'm, you know, I'm excited that the, that the council is moving forward on the, on the Tullys project. It was disappointing to hear that there may be a legal challenge over the rezone, but I'm, I'm excited to hear what's, what's presented tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Gary Robinson, Jackie, and then Ava, Ava Upson, please.
Welcome.
Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way. You know, to be honest with you, I think that most of us who address you do so, not because we think it will affect your behavior, but rather because it is one way in which we can engage with the community at large. To that end, I would like to use my 3 minutes to address a topic that is not often mentioned, but which can have a positive influence on us. That topic is called social capital. Social capital is the network of relationship links, shared values, and understandings among people who live and work in a society, enabling one another to trust each other so that society functions effectively. It is also referred to as those tangible assets that count for most of in our daily lives, namely goodwill, fellowship, sympathy, and social intercourse among the individuals and families who make up a social unit. The central premise of social capital is that social networks create value for people who are connected, and at least sometimes for bystanders as well, in terms of protective quality of health, higher education scores, and other benefits to society. Regrettably, your actions would seem to document that you are actually squandering what local social capital exists for regional political expediency. Consider the following examples that build social capital, but that have been withdrawn by the city council and city manager because islanders rejected an ill-conceived levy. The firehouse munch has been canceled. When it costs the city next to nothing, sure sounds like the Grinch to me. I don't believe there are 80 hours of city time involved. The cancellation of the library board. It costs next to nothing to run, and the board offered to do it in a way that ensured it was cost-neutral. Control was the issue here, not building social capital. And it has been relegated to a new bloated parks department, an opportunity lost to generate social capital. The closing of the community center on Sundays that strikes directly at the withdrawal of the opportunity to generate social capital. And there are more, if there were time to go into it. The council and city manager might say, "But look at what we are doing with MICA. That was such a lost opportunity to generate social capital. It resulted in active withdrawal of social capital by the way the council and a group of citizens have literally bankrupted the solidarity of the residents." You need to ask yourself, what you are doing for residents will increase social capital. I am pressed to find any. I find all manner of seemingly vindictiveness.
Thank you.
I got it in 10 seconds. Because of the failure of the levy, but I find nothing that would increase our social capital. We expect you to do things that bring the island together, not decimate it.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Jackie Dunbar, and I live at 7116 82nd Avenue Southeast. I was attended all four of the Aubrey Davis Park focus groups, as did many other.
Clerk?
Sorry?
It's all right, city clerk. Thank you.
Can I go?
Got it. You got a green light now.
Oh, sorry. I'll start over. Jackie Dunbar, 7116 82nd Avenue Southeast. I attended all four of the Aubrey Davis Park focus groups, as did many other Mercer Island residents. And at each of the focus groups that we attended, the people who were in charge took written notes, very detailed written notes, by everything that was said by people, by everybody who attended. And so, there are written records from all four groups. And so, what I'm asking you to do as council members, and I don't think it would actually take a long time, because the people were very, wrote one-word descriptions, to just review the comments made by the citizens, because the citizens took their time to do this, and frankly, there were really some good suggestions from people. The one thing that was most important to everybody was safety, because the park is going to be shared not only by bikers and bicycle riders, who would be different, going different speeds, different expertise of riding, but also, the park's going to be shared by small children, older people, sometimes people with wheelchairs. And so, I, all I'm asking you to do is review the notes that the citizens, comments that citizens made before you decide, make any decisions about the park. And thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Eva Upson. I live at 2448 60th Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington. And I wanted to bring up to account, to the council, the idea of changing parts of the leash laws on the Mercer Island website. And this has to do, and I'm bringing this up mostly because I am concerned, because I, I'm a driver now, and every time I see somebody with a dog, it's usually either on a leash, which is great, or without a leash, which is also, is lawful. At the same time, sometimes that dog is farther away than is comfortable for me. It makes me feel like if I'm driving and if I get too close to that dog, the dog could kind of, I don't know what they would do for the car. I don't know if I would hit them. I don't want to hit them. And so, my proposal is to change parts of that law in order to say, in order to kind of just mirror each other. So, for the leash law, it says that the leash has to be no more than 8 feet. And I think that should be the same for off-leash or voice control. So, when a dog is off-leash, that dog should be no more than 6 feet away from the owner, or 8 feet, 8 feet away from the owner, in order to make it safer for drivers and for the dogs, as well, as well for the owners. Because I, it's in a residential area, and I don't want, I don't want that happening to any dog. I don't want it happening to my dog. And so, I think it would be really important to kind of bring that up. And along with that, I don't know, especially the people that I, I know, I don't know how often they really check those laws. And so, my other proposal is bringing up, is putting up a sign right by, or at the corner of 60th Avenue Southeast and 24th, in order to kind of bring awareness to it. And it would say, like, "All dogs must be on leash or be under voice control." And hopefully, if the law changes for the voice control, it would also specify that the dog needs to be at least 8 feet away from the owner. And this is, again, only to just protect drivers and dogs alike, because it's, it's really important, it's important to me. I think it's about important to other people. And I think, like, it might seem something like, it, like, it doesn't happen often, but I know I've seen owners throw balls for their dogs in the road, or just let their dogs just walk away. And I am concerned about that, because if I hit them, then I'm going to feel awful. It might not be my fault, per se, but it's still, like, really, it would be very hard for me to deal with. So, anyway, that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being such a concerned new driver.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else for public appearances?
We have 2 more on the list, mayor. One appears to be Peter, and then Paul.
Where's Mary?
Mary? Welcome.
Nice that we can all laugh. Good evening.
Clerk, can we get the, I'm just gonna ask, Deb, can we get the, thank you.
There we go. Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Peter Struck, residing at 9130 Southeast 54th Street. Before you tonight is AB 5527, that outlines a proposed process to develop a non-binding but exclusive MOU with Main Street. The 2 project objectives are the building of commuter parking spaces and a performing arts space for MICA, if feasible. While it is stated that MICA will negotiate agreements separately and directly with Main Street that satisfy their goals and objectives, I must remind the council that the city already has executed an MOU with MICA in 2016 at the Mercerdale Park site. Thus, I believe, and I'm confident that the majority of the community would concur, that MICA and the city need to terminate or tear up their existing MOU before entering negotiations with Main Street. Now, I can understand that MICA would want to have access to both locations, using the MOU as an essentially costless option provided by the city to develop land. However, I believe most folks that have studied both locations understand that the Tullys site is superior, and thus, if MICA is unable to achieve success there, it's highly unlikely that the Mercerdale site would fare, fare any better. Furthermore, the Agenda Bill states the city cannot provide, and I underscore, direct financial support for MICA. Does that statement then imply that indirect financial support is okay? And are there other entitlements or enticements from the city that may not be construed in the narrow sense of, as direct financial support? The council and the community needs to understand what type of support is envisioned before we enter a MOU negotiation. And if none is envisioned, so be it, and it should be stated in a complete and explicit manner. Finally, I believe the council needs to ask the city staff to estimate the cost of this MOU process. And the expenditure listed in the, in the bill of NA, which I assume is not applicable or not available, is, it just needs to be corrected. If you think about it, adding staff time over a 6 to 9-month period, consultants, outside consultants, legal advice, this could easily be a 5- to 6-figure cost just to create a non-binding MOU. So, to summarize, let's make sure we fully understand what is being proposed here, and it is consistent with previous decisions before we sign on the dotted line. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, council. Happy New Year. Paul Schumaker, 4546 Forest, and part of the MICA team. Just a couple of thoughts. One, we just want to state out loud for the record, we are very excited by the opportunity to partner with the city and Main Street to move this project forward and meet the needs that the community of Mercer Island expressed to us again and again and again for a cultural gathering space, for the arts and the whole community on Mercer Island. We're very excited by it. So, just want to really emphasize that. We know there's a ton of voices that care about this project. We will, we know we won't agree with all of them. Our commitment is to continue to maximize every possible pro and minimize any possible cons of whatever project we come up with. We will continue to listen, just like we did to over 1,000 islanders last year. We'll keep listening. There will be a community input and engagement process. We know how to do that. The city knows how to do that. These guys know how to do that. We will listen to, we will hear from the city. And also know that MICA has a full-blown 2019 business plan with a budget close to $1 million bucks that we are fully executing on to create and deliver the first full-blown fundraising campaign that MICA's ever done, to completely contribute to the design team and process, and to make sure that we ramp up our communications. The design's got a long ways to go. We all agree that we should have a great design for this island. I know these guys do. I know Ed does. We're all committed to that. And last but not least, just know that we are, as an organization, we are committed to listening to any islander that wants to talk about this, or understand it, or answer their questions 24/7, 365, just like we always have. Cannot wait to get started on 2019. Thanks.
Thank you.
I signed up late. She said, "Just come on up."
Welcome.
Okay. So, I'm Carol Franz, and I'm at 3260 80th Avenue Southeast, number 4. Been on the island since 1979. So, this is what I wanted to say to those members of the council who, over this long haul around MICA, negotiated and worked so hard, and you did such a fabulous job. I just want to say, thank you. Thank you. I watched you work through the Freshy side. I watched you work through this. I saw the negotiations. I just read the MOU, and I can't say how, how grateful I am for the work you've done and what a great job you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. With that, we close public appearances. The next item of business is the consent calendar. And it contains payables, payroll, AB 5524 Boards and Commission Code amendments, and AB 5523 Southeast 22nd Street and Southeast 22nd Place Water System Improvements. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
So moved.
First and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Great. So, with that, we now move into regular business. Our first item of business is Agenda Bill 5527, Memorandum of Understanding for the Proposed Commuter Parking and Town Center Mixed Use Project. And for that, we welcome City Manager Julie Underwood. Andor Ali Sveats.
Yes, Mayor, Julie Underwood, City Manager. I'll be presenting this item. I don't have many slides. Thank you, Ali, for getting me all set up there. So, this is in relation to the Proposed Commuter Parking and Town Center Mixed Use Project. In essence, I'm hoping you will authorize me to initiate a negotiation process to develop a public-private development partnership with Main Street. Yeah, there we go. Just as a reminder, the problem we are solving is a lack of sufficient commuter parking to access transit. Back in April of 2018, we conducted a citizen survey, and the citizens identified this as their top transportation priority for the city. The property we're talking about is the Tullys and Parcel 12 site that's being proposed for redevelopment. You can see here, it's less than 500 feet from the Future Light Rail Station. So, the location is superb. It's ideal. Recall that the funding structure for the proposed project is Sound Transit settlement dollars. You recall, you negotiated this in June. We settled this in June of 2017, and we're 1 year into that 8-year agreement. And we have total $10 million in that agreement, and over almost $4.5 million for commuter parking. And recall, as part of the settlement agreement, Sound Transit can only be a minority share, so roughly 49%, and the city has to be the majority share, the 51%. Why is that important? That allows us to provide, really, provincial parking for Mercer Island residents. Public parking, but for our residents. So, you may be asking, how is the city going to come up with its 51% share? So, by leveraging the land, so in essence, by assembling the Tullys property, which we have a purchase and sale agreement on, contract on that now, with the city's own parcel 12 property, we believe by assembling those 2 properties, it makes it a very attractive site for a partner and a developer to come in. So, we're hoping we can attract, and we think we have, a really great partner. And recall, as part of the settlement agreement, Sound Transit can only be a minority share, so roughly 49%, and the city has to be the majority share, the 51%. Why is that important? That allows us to provide, really, provincial parking for Mercer Island residents. Public parking, but for our residents. So you may be asking, how is the city gonna come up with its 51% share? So by leveraging the land, so in essence, by assembling the Tully's property, which we have a purchase and sale agreement on, a contract on that now, with the city's own Parcel 12 property, we believe by assembling those two properties, it makes it a very attractive site for a partner and a developer to come in. So we're hoping we can attract, and we think we have, a really great partner that can construct the underground parking, and then in exchange for that, they will have the air rights to develop on the site. And our ultimate goal, really, is to deliver parking for the least cost possible for city taxpayers. We're envisioning that the city will maintain ownership of the parking once constructed. Just to remind you of this process. So we initiated the RFQ process. The council reviewed the RFQ a number of times back in July and August last summer. We conducted and opened up a competitive process in August and in September. And then we did a review, a due diligence, in October and November. In fact, council, right after the Thanksgiving break, interviewed our two finalists on November 26. And recall that we were really pleased to see nine excellent developers submit RFQs for this process. But especially excited to see our two finalists were Main Street Property Group and Shelter Holdings Weinstein AU. So they went through an interview process with you, as I mentioned, at the end of November, and then they approached the city a few weeks after that and offered a proposal where they would merge both of their, really, both of their concepts. Excited to see that Main Street then brought on Weinstein, partnering with them. Weinstein will be the lead architect on the project, so really excited to see them join forces. We're envisioning a phased negotiation process. I think a good way to characterize it is a phase one would be to negotiate an MOU. An MOU is where both parties really identify the terms that they want to see in an agreement, or, as I like to call it, kind of making sure there are no deal breakers. And then, I think the part of note here is it's non-binding, with the exception of the fact that we are negotiating exclusively. So we envision that as a roughly, maybe, six to nine months that would be wrapped up. And then a phase two where we prepare a development agreement, and we think that can take two to three months. Now, it's quite possible that you could have some overlap, but in essence, I think it's important for us to take a thoughtful and prudent approach where we offer the opportunity to check in with council throughout the process. Of course, the council is the ultimate deciding body for the MOU as well as the development agreement. And so I am seeking your authorization tonight. In your packet is Resolution Number 1588 that really spells that out. It highlights an outline of a potential MOU, and obviously, it helps us really initiate the negotiation process. So I guess another way to put it is you're kind of really not deciding very much tonight, except you're just directing me to go forward to really get some more, really, details on what a future agreement could look like. Mayor, that's all I have. If you have any... Oh, I do want to... Oh, my goodness. Our potential partner, I'd like to invite Kelly Price. He is the co-founder and president for Main Street. If he... If I can invite him up to just say a few words to the council. Thank you.
Deb, do we need to... Thank you.
Thank you. Testing. All right, there we go.
And you get more than three minutes if you need it.
Okay, okay. Well, I really just wanted to say a few things. First of all, thanks for going through this process with the city staff and with us and all the participants in it. We've been at this for over six months now, and we've put a lot of time and effort collectively, all of us, into the process, and one of the exciting yet unexpected results is that we're here with Ed Weinstein and his team. So our team and Ed's team as the architect, and us as the developer of merged forces. And I think as we went through the process, particularly with Shelter Holdings and with the city, there was a point in time when a kind of a realization occurred where we clearly had the experience with similar issues in other cities in projects like this. Ed had the passion, and his team had the passion to be the architect here, and had really sweat the details on a lot of the design aspects that make this project unique, particularly with the MICA influence on the ground floor. We're not aware of another project, really, in the nation of this type that has been as ambitious as this around merging a mixed-use mid-rise project with a performance center. We've spent enough time to think, based on what we see, that it's possible to do. We're excited about that opportunity, and we think it could bring a whole different level of excitement into this project as a gateway to the city. So in the past, I've talked about the visions that, you know, we've had for the project, and I won't rehash that right now. Suffice to say, we have our eye on the ball relative to the commuter parking. I rolled into Mercer Island today about 6 o'clock, drove all the various parking areas, particularly the park and ride. Not one spot available anywhere. Yet there are two giant light rail stations that are coming out of the ground and, well, well out of the ground now. So the need is there, and we've committed to deliver that. That'll all be spelled out in the MOU process, and we met last Wednesday with the city staff and various consultants to kind of lay out what a timeframe looked like for this effort, and Julie did a good job of summarizing that. And then some of the key elements that would go into an MOU. So we have a good understanding of the next steps in the negotiation, and like Julie said, we have to sort out if there are deal breakers. And where there are potential deal breakers, one of our jobs as a developer is to help solve those problems and figure those out. It's pretty much 100% of the case in complicated situations like this where there are issues that need a lot of problem solving and a lot of creativity, and we have a track record of doing that, and we have the team in place to help facilitate that. So we're excited to get going with this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, well, thanks. I see that you've got the extended team or the mini extended team here.
The mini team.
The mini powerhouse team.
Right.
Okay, great. Well, what I would say is, we're gonna go ahead and we'll open it up for council comments and questions. Maybe we start at least with some directed primarily towards Julie, city staff, and then, you know, as needed, we can certainly tap into that experience that you've offered up. So council, Bruce? Bruce, Wendy Benson, okay.
Julie, looking at the last page of the Agenda Bill, page six, under project objectives, you have the first two bullets. And I'm wondering, when we heard the presentations earlier, when there were two developers, there was confidence that we would get to 150 spaces, yet here you've set up to 50 shared. And I think we also heard confidence that MICA could be accommodated, yet you've sort of softened that with potential provision of and provided the inclusion is feasible. I'd like to understand better why you've used such squishy language here, and whether it makes sense for us to just leave that latitude for you or whether it makes sense for us to be, if there's a council will, more directive about that.
Yeah, I'm gonna just build up to clarify, because I was trying to get to the RFQ, the original RFQ, because I know it said a minimum dedicated 100 spots. It didn't say anything about 50. And then, just for staff, I went to click on the link, and it takes me to a blank page now to look at the RFQ. Yeah.
The... You might recall that the RFQ noted a minimum of 100 spaces. We were optimistic about Main Street's proposal because we could get closer to 150, but I think in this early, early phase, I think right now, because they did spell out in their RFP that it was shared, we'd like to kind of start with where they initially thought it could work as a baseline. And then, as far as MICA, I think it... I think there's still a lot of unknowns, and so I think you're astute to see that there is some squishiness in that language, some flexibility in that language. There are things there, meaning, obviously, we're recommending that the developer negotiate directly with MICA that they have to sort out and understand. At the end of the day, this is a... Probably, for us, a great deal of risk is being borne by the developer. It's good for us as the city. We like that. But I think there's kind of recognizing there is that balance we want to strike with being able to deliver on the parking ultimately, but also, I mean, it would be a win-win to have MICA as part of the project, and council has always expressed that. But we want to make sure that it can also work for the developer. I don't want it to tip in such a way that, at the end of the day, it doesn't produce our parking. So there is some flexibility in that language for that reason.
Am I mis... If I may, misremembering that, I thought I recalled that both proposals we saw, both RFQ responses we saw, did offer up 150 parking stalls. I don't... And if you say some were shared and some were not, I don't recall that level of details. I'm happy to go there, or happy to agree with you on that. But I don't think either one said, well, we'll have to be less than 150.
Oh, yeah, none of them.
Okay. But the language you've used here softens that by saying "up to."
Up to for the 50 shared, but at a minimum 100, for sure.
Why would we dedicate it?
Yep.
Why would we cap it at 50 shared spots?
Well, I'm not even ca... I'm thinking, why would we? Because you're actually... The language you're actually caps it, or doesn't cap it, but it says you could declare success with 100 spots. Period. Because it says "up to 50." So it could conceive, you could sort of declare victory with 100 dedicated and zero shared. And that... So that's why I'm hesitant to sort of offer that latitude, because it sort of sets an expectation that we might be happy to go back from where we thought we were at the RFQ stage.
Well, I think these are those details that would be negotiated as part of the MOU. If the council is directing me, staff, at the end of the day, maximize the number of parking stalls you can get on this project, do that. Does that make sense? So I think this is trying to recognize this is what the RFP submitted by Main Street offered up, but certainly, you can direct me to maximize that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm actually gonna build up that a little bit, because I'm thinking in part, how do we get through tonight? Because we can each individually provide the feedback, or, you know, we can work our way through some of these issues. And what Bruce raised is mine. I feel like we might unnecessarily be boxing ourselves in with this particular statement, putting a number next to... Well, we have to put a minimum next to the dedicated, because that's the whole premise of this development, is a minimum 100 dedicated commuter parking places for Mercer Islanders. And then everything else beyond that is considerably, or conceivably not the minimum. So I think I would be more comfortable in going to some statement that says maximize, you know, dedicated islander commuting stalls. And then we know that it's a minimum of 100, and then what we get beyond that that's dedicated versus shared, there's gonna have to be an optimization equation, but it's gonna have to come back to us at some point anyway. Does any other council member want to comment on this parking count basis? Dave, and then Benson, everybody does, so we'll start with Dave.
Just quickly, I feel a little bit like you guys are bringing that point out well, that we're negotiating against ourselves a little bit, and that we all agreed in the RFP process, including Main Street, that there would be 150 parking places. Why is that not the minimum bar that we start with? How those are split, you know, a minimum of 100 dedicated and a minimum of 50 shared would give us the language that we would say, okay, we've got 150.
That's what you just said.
Then they can go above.
I think the RFQ only required a minimum 100.
But if they have already... They have already offered up 150, I believe, in the... No, is that wrong? Okay, good to be wrong. Then I'll retract that.
Counsel, if you're comfortable, actually, I'm gonna go... I know Wendy was next on the list. Was your question about parking or... Should we... Can we... And then next time, we're gonna start at your end. Okay, so we'll go Bruce, and then, arguably, Benson, Lisa, Wendy. Okay, Benson.
I have a question other than parking, but the only thing I would say about parking is that it sounds like we probably need to go back and look at the language itself of the RFQ and then go back and look at the actual responses by the... by Main Street. That's my only comment.
That is what's in here. I mean, it's capturing that.
When you say that's in here, he mentioned two things. He said, one, the RFQ, and then he said the responses. This does not match the RFQ.
The RFQ said a minimum of 100.
But it didn't say anything about up to shared.
No, it didn't.
So in that sense, it doesn't...
That's a little bit of the carrot, I think, Main Street, which made Main Street one of the top finalists is they're recognizing putting more on the table is more desirable to us. Frankly.
Sure, I have a list of seven issues, but only one of them is parking, so maybe as we go around the table again. But the parking and in general, my concern, frankly, about going forward tonight is that the parameters within which this council desires the MOU to be negotiated are not sufficiently clear. And I don't know how we, you know, communicate that to our city manager, because I'm new to this process, and whether we can have an executive session to address that, or do we essentially have to give direction in a public forum, which is fine if that's the case, but it does seem to somewhat tie a person's hands when you're trying to, you know, give guidance in terms of negotiating when the other side can hear all the guidance. And I don't know if... Carrie, I said I wouldn't surprise you. Now I'm surprising you. But yeah, lawyer to lawyer, just really, what process is there for council to clarify the desires and parameters of this MOU, if we authorize the negotiation, to the city manager?
Well, we were contemplating this would be an open session discussion and provide open guidance at this point, just because this is really setting an outline for the MOU negotiations. And of course, a draft MOU will be brought forward to the council for future review and approval. So there may be even multiple iterations of a draft MOU. And of course, executive session is only authorized for limited specified purposes in state law. And at this point, this doesn't meet any of those enumerated purposes. And so in terms of specificity of the guidance that you would like to provide, not just you, council member, and oral, but the council collectively, you know, we're here to get that input and feedback as part of tonight's meeting. So we do welcome any more direction from council regarding high-level deal terms that you would like to see incorporated and captured in this MOU.
You're comfortable for now, Lisa? As comfortable as you can be, I guess, at this point.
We can move on.
Okay, great. Wendy?
So I'm gonna take us back to the 30,000-foot level and say thank you for combining forces. And if you could introduce Kim again, I can't remember what her role is, and you forgot to do that the first time, too, and would appreciate knowing that.
Thank you. Yeah, Kim Fau-
Yeah, Kim Faust is here from Main Street. Kim's a senior development manager, basically runs our development efforts at Main Street, and has since the very beginning, and we worked together long before Main Street as well.
So she's going to kind of be on point for this whole thing, right?
Right.
Great, so important person to know who she is.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And thank you for combining forces, because I was really not looking forward to having to pick between one or the other, because I liked elements of both. And so thank you for making me not do that. So my, so we're talking about our MOU, we're talking about your MOU with MICA. I know this is uncharted territory. You say there's no other project like this that has parking in an art center, and, and then you talked about deal breakers, and, and I know we're all going in this, you know, with good intentions, and we'll sort out the details of MOU that our two lawyers, three lawyers probably want to get into, once our staff and your staff have a chance to put something on paper that you guys are used to doing, we're not. So I'm really looking forward to the details that we can get to. Parking, love for you to optimize as much as you can get for us. Most importantly, we want this thing to be beautiful, we want this thing to work, we want you to get some sort of return on your investment, and I think we all want this art center by now. So whatever you can do to make those two MOUs work, between the two different ways you have to do that, all the legal stuff, all the financial stuff, please do your best. Thank you very much. And my question is then, how are you going to do two MOUs, and how is that going to work with, with those two key pieces of city, Sound Transit and you guys and MICA? Like, could you just walk me through what you're thinking, or what keeps you up at night, or is this all rainbows and unicorns?
Well, there is a lot going on. So, you know, first and foremost, we have a timeframe around an MOU with the city, and that lays out parameters such as parking, timelines, construction start, construction completion, who has what responsibilities between Main Street and the city. And then secondarily, and to a large extent, on a parallel course, is an MOU with MICA and the MICA team that lays out our commitments to MICA and their commitments to us and a related timeframe. And then as we go forward on the design, we continue to come back to the MOU with MICA and make sure that those commitments can be upheld. The devil's in the detail on a lot of this exercise, and there's going to be a, a lot of iteration of the plans and, and designs to try to figure out what is possible and, and what isn't. So the MOU with MICA will likely be an iterative process, but the MOU with the city is something that we come back and, and talk about with council, I would expect several times at least, to make sure that you're up to speed with the terms that we're talking about, and that you understand how terms are being arrived at. You know, if the shared parking ends up being more than 50 or less than 50, we want to make sure that you know why. What are the constraints, or what created the ability to get more than expected? Because there only is so much property to work with, both above and below ground. So we're going to be constrained by that.
So counsel, I want to pull us back and make sure that we've actually cleared the question of parking, in terms of the level of guidance that we want to provide the city manager. What I took away is two words, optimize and maximize. And what I also heard is, of course, the minimum being the 100 as required for the RFQ. There was obviously more that was provided in both the, both of the proposals that came forward. Are we, are you raising your hand because you agree, or because you have a question or a statement?
I have a statement.
Okay. So what I'm hearing right now is that we would like perhaps to see something more that's about optimize or maximize, and perhaps not cap ourselves. But with that said, Bruce?
Sorry, I didn't want to cut you off. I was just trying to get in queue to talk, so if you had more you wanted to say, please.
No, I just want us to clear the parking, and then we'll go on to hit some other issues.
Just a quick question before it. What was the date of the two final presentations?
On November 26.
That's the agenda bill that has the materials?
Yes.
Thanks.
So I, I think I'm going, same place Salim's going here first. I, I would ask, this is just me, so if council rejects us, that's fine, ask that staff do go back and review the, both the, the proposals that were received and the, and the conversation that occurred that evening, so that we understand where that was. I'd like to see us try to achieve what was talked about that evening. But at the same time, I'm okay with leaving flexible language here, as Dave and I were sort of pointing at, you know, there's going to be opportunities to, to work this more. But personally, my enthusiasm for what's, what seems to be emerging will be much higher if it seems to be matching up with what we thought we were going to be seeing earlier. To Debbie's point about maximizing versus having a minimum, I, I do, I, I think it's reasonable to recognize that there's a, a trade-off that's going to have to occur between getting MICA and, if, if you say, I want to maximize parking, and yet MICA is left as sort of an optional, well, you can get a lot more parking if you take MICA out of the equation, right? So I don't, what I want to get is definitely MICA, and so that's, I mean, it's sort of, I'm switching gears a little bit back to where I started here. The, the softness of the language around MICA, to me, is, is not exactly where I'd want to go. I, I fully get that they've got to do their fundraising, they, they've got a whole process they've got to go through, they've got to hit their milestones along the way on that, and if, if, if that's falling apart, then all bets are off. But to the extent that they've, that they've set a path that they're going to go down and that they're doing that, I, I don't want us to have this end up being, you know, using the languages here, infeasible for MICA. So it, it, it's got to work, as long as they can get the funding to be a, in my opinion, a successful project. And it's got to hit a minimum on the parking, which, but, but not go to maximize parking and then lose MICA. Is that?
Counsel, is there anybody?
Again, it's only my, my opinion.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Lisa?
And this is probably a question for Julie. What tools does the city have, and what level of guarantee is there that the parking will be for Mercer Island residents?
Wow, you're having me think about how to operate that garage, and I don't know how to do that. I'm going to probably lean on our partner developer team on that. We would probably, I assume, use technology to, to do that, but we do have a, I mean, we do have a, a low-tech permit parking process now for some of, some of the parking that's in town center. So it could be something low-tech like that, but I'm envisioning something a little more high-tech. Yes, and probably some different type of pricing scheme. I mean, these are the source of details that I really don't have yet, but these are the kinds of things I know you will want, I know our community will want, so at least I know that is something I need to come back to you and address in the future. How would that parking operation really work, and how would we ensure it's Mercer Island only?
Okay, and so it's, it's contemplated that it's going to be paid parking, not free parking?
I don't know how we can, in our city's financial condition, provide free parking when we know it costs money to maintain a garage. So I would, would imagine sometime arrangement where we'd have to ask for some fee to cover the, really the ongoing maintenance, but I don't know what that could look like.
Okay, I'm going to bring us back to the wording again in the MOU. Benson?
Yeah, can I get a question in or a comment?
Well, I, I'd really like us to land the MOU. If you want to leverage it, that's great, but otherwise, I, or the other option is we just, we just, everybody throws out their questions, and then we sort through it at the end. I'm open to different, different options, but what I am concerned about is that we're not going to provide the level of clarity and specificity that our staff needs to go away and feel that they can move forward on this. So.
With that in mind.
With that in mind.
Okay. You know, I think, you know, for me, the purpose of the MOU should be very high-level, very general in terms, and just provide some guidance to our negotiators, and the negotiators on the other side. Obviously, they're going to end up crafting this MOU, which is really an agreement to agree, and then that leads to, ultimately to the development agreement. So I don't want to get too nitpicky, but having said that, I guess I want to sort of respond to Bruce's concerns, which I also share with respect to the language about MICA, and realize that there's no certainty about MICA being in the facility because of fundraising and what have you. But I would prefer, instead of saying something like the potential, the potential provision, I would rather just simply say that this project objective includes the inclusion of MICA, and then you already have a provision in there regarding, provided that MICA meets its funding milestones, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think that's a more forceful statement by saying that it's going to be included, but again, recognizing that there are some provisals. That's just a general comment. But I have a question for the city staff, and for Julie, and for, I guess for Julie. It's that last sentence in that bullet, and I think Peter Struck mentioned it as well in his comments, and it's a legitimate one, and it's one that's not really carried over into the agenda bill itself, and that is, can you elaborate on that sense where the city cannot provide direct financial support to MICA? What did you mean by that? How broad is that? And what's, you know, because obviously the public is going to be concerned about the possibility of somehow city funds, given our dire financial straits, being diverted to MICA.
I appreciate that question. I know Paul Schumaker has probably heard me say this more, more times than he cares to repeat, that, so I, I know in the past, the city has been generous with some capital investments for some of our local nonprofits. I just don't think we're in a place now where we can do that, and I've made that very clear. I look at this as our partnership, I mean, I kind of, while I'm suggesting we do have two separate, different agreements, I do think there is an inherent partnership with MICA. How is that partnership plays out is that we're envisioning our parking would be used for MICA patrons on the off commute hours. We're envisioning they receive the air rights to develop on the property, so that's how I envision, again, not direct financial, but those are some of those, I think, partnerships, and in return, hopefully, we get a beautiful performing arts center. So that's been really the conversation I've had with Paul, is that's how I envisioning the city's contribution to the MICA project, is their patrons using the parking and the air rights. So beyond that, we really are not in any financial position to contribute more than that. And the, the good news about that is they have been very, I think, strong in saying they, they understand. They know the city is not in a position to provide a direct financial contribution to their projects. So they know the city is not in any financial position to operate a facility, so, and they've never asked for that. So I, I just think this is meant to put out there to the public, we are not in a position to provide that financial contribution to MICA.
Does that also include staff time? Do you ever envision city staff assisting MICA towards, towards their project?
I mean, not, no, I mean, I think I've been meeting with MICA a great deal, because as you know, this has been on the council work plan, but, I mean, there's no, I don't envision the city.
I guess I would ask, when you say assistance, that to me was pretty general.
Yeah, I'm trying to contemplate what type of assistance, I don't think.
Well, certainly, and obviously you guys are negotiating, which is fine.
Sure.
I mean, yeah, but you're not, I, dedicating staff time to work on MICA matters, I mean...
No, I mean, beyond the fact that there was an application for the Mercerdale, which by law we have to process, no, no, I don't envision any assistance to MICA. Yeah.
So I feel like me trying to close on parking is like trying to put a genie back in the bottle right now. So I am going to just take notes on some of the issues and then come back at the end, and hopefully, we will be able to crisply and succinctly close out and give you the direction you need. So with that on my list, I had Dave as next.
So to sort through all my points at once, and so you don't ever have to come back to me again. I, I think, listening to, to our city attorney helped me sort of clarify a little bit of this in our mind. I don't think we need to crack the atom tonight on, on exactly what we want to see, because we'll see this probably three or four times before it's ever live. So I think we, you know, put some trust in our, our city attorney and our, our city manager to, to go forth and craft a, a good draft version, and then we can hammer away at that as we love to do. The second is, is, and I agree with, with Bruce and Benson, and on the MICA piece, and I think that, you know, we need to help MICA get a little bit of certainty. We've come this far, clearly, the majority council, if not unanimous council, is in, in favor of, of this project, including MICA, and I think, we all think that's a good thing. But as we, you know, as, as we pass the baton from where the city and MICA are engaged in the race, and now the baton is being handed to Main Street and MICA to work together, I think that, that MICA has a little bit of one foot on the dock and one foot on the boat, and, and certainly, we don't want the, the operation to founder because of our, our lack of involvement. So anything that we can do to give them some certainty that this is, you know, we did select Main Street because they were in favor of inclusion of MICA in the project in general. If MICA can't raise their money, that's a separate thing altogether, and we get, everybody gets that. Very lastly, in terms of, of city staff involvement, you know, we have, we've had to spend a, a lot of our time, and, and there has been some staff time to get this project to where it is, and I, I would submit, while, you know, I don't think any of us would ever support a direct financial contribution, these deals don't magically happen, and, and I think, just to, to sort of warn the public that there will be some level of engagement from the city in this, in this project as it involves, it involves MICA, but is it a dedicated staff person or anything like that? Absolutely not. But these deals are complicated and don't magically happen, so I think it's, it's, to think that the city's going to just sort of stand by on the sidelines is probably not a realistic view either.
Okay, on my list, I actually had Lisa, then I'm going to take a turn, and then we'll come back to Bruce.
Okay, well, I'll take a page out of Dave's book and just let you know all of my concerns. And one is, I don't know that it's going to be fair at this point to ask the city manager and the city attorney to parse through all of our kind of seven streams of consciousness guidance, to, to have a coherent plan to go forth and negotiate, so. But the concerns that I have are the size of the project overall, and, and that falls in two ways. One is just the impact to the neighborhood, the encroachment on the park. I was very much in favor of moving the consideration of any sort of a site or development from Mercerdale to the Tully's location. I was not aware at that time that there could be potentially park encroachment or, or basically taking. And then whether that land is, you know, right-of-way, washed-out right-of-way, whatever, it's, I don't really care what the legal status or classification of that land is, it functions for the residents as a park. It's really the only green space north of Mercerdale for what is becoming a very dense and congested part of town with residential folks, and I feel like it's important, if there were a way to size the project, while maximizing parking, of course, but, so as to minimize any taking of Sculpture Park or, or park lands, and minimize impacts on direct neighbors with sightlines and other issues. I also have concerns related to the size of the project with regard to existing congestion on 27th, and whether that can be adequately mitigated today during busy and whether that can be adequately mitigated today during busy times. Traffic stretches, unbroken car from stoplight to stoplight to stop sign. And I've, I have concerns about, again, the size of the project, the size of any proposed theater, the size of, the amount of people that will be in that very kind of small area. I have concerns that residents not be left on the hook, or taxpayers of the city not be left on the hook for any costs associated with MICA. I think MICA needs to stand or fall on its own fundraising, which I have assurances from Mr. Schumaker that they will do. And, and I don't, I don't mean that as a statement against the arts or to sound callous, but it's, it, this is a kind of a, we have to take a bigger picture for all 24,000 residents. And I think, I think that's it.
Oh, don't ever make a final statement.
For now, for now.
Okay, great. Well, I'm going to take a quick stab at this. One of the elements that did not appear in here, and I'd like to actually understand if it was intentional that it didn't appear in here. And that is that there is some reference to compliance with the spirit and/or code of Town Center. Because I know there's been a lot of questions that's been out there, the extent to which, you know, there, there would be exceptions for this. And do we, is it needed? Is it something that should come up and/or any other thoughts that you have?
You might recall during the RFQ process, there were some submittals that were beyond the Town Center Code. One of the reasons we, especially staff, really preferred Main Street's proposal as well as Shelter's is they were able to deliver a project within the Town Center Code. So, you know, I would not be recommending any code amendments. I think by the sheer fact that we had nine interested developers, that tells me we can probably make this work within the code. So I'm excited to see our code actually be implemented. And I think, you know, that's not to say an extra story wouldn't, you know, I mean, that would be great. It's not within our code. So, because I know I've heard rumblings out there. It's a five-story building we're talking about, and that's within our code. So, oh, and even though it's kind of also within our code, it's going to also go through a design commission review process as well. So that is something we're anticipating. You know, Evan and his team will be working with the design commission on too.
And I see there is also called out a community outreach plan.
That's, yeah, okay.
Super. So I had, then I had Bruce and then Saleem, you're leaning in? Okay.
Carrie, you were headed same direction I was. I wasn't sure whether to go to actual language now or later, but I figured you're, you're already halfway there, so.
I thought it may be helpful.
Yeah, so I'm going to suggest that we strike the word potential and that we also strike the, the words in the second line of that paragraph, "the inclusion is feasible and." So that would be my, what I would have offered as an amendment, a potential amendment to this. Oh, sorry.
Am I in the right paragraph?
Yeah, yeah, but your, your line breaks at different places than mine. So yes, but after the word "provided," on line two of that paragraph, strike "the inclusion is feasible and." No, I'm just, I'm saying that this is the language that I'm proposing. We could wait and do it as an amendment, but Carrie's already got it up there. So I just was going to have, go up there.
For discussion purposes.
I'm just going to read it now in that new form, which is, "The provision of a Mercer Island Center for the Arts, MICA Theater and Performing Space, provided MICA meets its fund, funding milestones to construct, operate, and maintain its portion of the project." So again, set it aside and wait and I'll offer it as amendment later or do it now.
Are you striking as determined by Main Street? Because somebody is determining whether they've met that milestone. And in this case, it's Main Street.
And if I could offer just a little clarification about the context of why it's phrased the way it is. So it's phrased.
Okay, so we're, so counsel, I have a question. We've, I've tried to pull this down to parking. Genie stayed out of the bottle. Now we're going, trying to go back and.
It's a Pandora's box at this point.
Thank you. It is a Pandora's box. I'm running out of analogies here. So does counsel want to sit on this particular item right now? Or do we want to just get the issues all out on the table and go from there? Because I know Saleem has not had the chance to speak yet.
Sorry.
Yeah, so stay tuned, Carrie, because I have a feeling this is probably not the only paragraph that's going to section, that's going to have some editing.
Well, so I went back and I looked at the packets. And Shelter had a slightly stronger vision on 150 stalls than Main Street. So Main Street, you both scored the same. But Main Street said the design concept includes a possibility of 150 commuter stalls exceeds minimum requirement by 50 stalls. Shelter had the same thing. But what Shelter said was 150 stalls shared with MICA, 150 stalls shared with the city parking. So there were 150 pooled stalls between MICA and the city for parking, whereas Main Street was a little more mysterious. Residents, MICA, commuter. And, but, you know, it seemed largely the same. They scored the same. So I, I do think it's important to change that language specific to parking that 100, 100 wouldn't be where I'd go. I'd be at the 150 or maximize, knowing that the city manager knows where we left off. We left off with two negotiating parties that have now combined into one. And we don't want the bar to go any lower. Now, I will say that I'm not concerned about the MICA component and the, the project feasibility. Because as MICA scales down or as the architects optimize the footprint, the developer is reclaiming that, that space. And that space has commercial value. So I'm, I would pause and I would hope that we contemplate who is being the arbiter of that financial feasibility, how much of the footprint MICA does absorb. I think MICA wants to optimize it and be as concise as possible within the footprint. But to the extent they're concise below 30,000 square feet, I think there's some commercial footprint opening up to Main Street, right? So these all, it's as you said, you know, the parking numbers will be in flux as the commercial feasibility goes up or down depending on MICA. I'd like and trust that this gets negotiated by you and not up here. But it, the risk reward is that as MICA becomes more concise or to the extent they can't fund 32,000 square feet, there's some commercial feasibility in your pocket. And I would hope that the commuters' parking would either solidify at the 150 mark or maybe exceed the 150 mark. But I'll leave it at that. And I think we, we all know where we left off with the two parties, intending to negotiate with those two parties. But here we are.
Benson and Wendy.
Yeah, I just want to keep in mind the fact that Main Street has to negotiate its own MOU with MICA. So I don't want to get too deep into this MICA language, you know, in terms of who determines if MICA meets its funding milestones. Because I think that issue is going to be addressed in the MOU between MICA and Main Street. And so I think the language that's suggested up there is probably sufficient. Again, I, I think it's important just not to get too deep into this. I think we're just trying to develop some general objectives to give guidance to our negotiators.
Wendy.
Yeah, so I'm just going to say, I think we need to have an agreement, and MICA and Main Street need to have an agreement. And the fundraising and design elements and timeline have to be locked down and managed by the developer, who's already dealing with the land use issues, sound transit. He knows his business better than we do. We have staff who know how to manage our land use regulations and state compliance within the letter of the law. If MICA can't meet the design and funding elements that they have in mind, they'll have to shrink it. And we also have other parking considerations we don't know about. What other commercial space is going to be in there? A bookstore, a coffee shop, a flower market? Like, whatever this looks like, we still need to hear from our public what else is going there and what, what we can actually do there, given how tight that dirt is and what's possible with the residential units we're also talking about and visitors there. So my understanding was tonight, we're going to sort of keep it at a high level with some pretty specifics about optimized parking and leave commercial space and give MICA some latitude around size and fundraising. And then come back with the details in the first round, right? So what can we do? Let's get it on paper and then let's hash out the details once the experts have had a chance to hash it out. So we're not going to solve it here, but let's let our experts take a first stab at it and dissect it once we know what, what details we can talk about. Please.
So I'm actually going to look to Julie and Carrie to, to provide a little guidance here in terms of what specifically it is that you need to hear from counsel right now.
Well, I think, I think you get it. I mean, I think Councilmember Wong is trying to help express that really you are meant to give us some general direction. You will sign off on everything. So there's going to be many touch points for the council to be able to weigh in on this. I would love to talk with Councilmember Andrell to kind of understand, are there other points here in the MOU we need to include? Again, those are things that I think we can still talk through, but you will constantly be involved in this. I guess, look, I'm really looking for you to okay us at least initiating that process. We have, as you know, we've retained, Carrie has retained Tom Brubaker as our outside legal counsel. He has a wealth of experience negotiating developer agreements. So I think we're going to be in very good hands working with him. You'll be, hopefully have a chance soon to meet with him. But he is going to really help us through this process. And, and hopefully, we'll seek another outside consultant that will also help guide us in this process. So I, I do feel like you're, you'll couple things, be heavily involved, have lots of touch points. And of course, I think you'll get really good guidance from the outside experts that we will be using through this process.
And as for tonight, what, what exactly is needed at this point? Carrie.
So, good evening, counsel. If I could just add, in terms of a framework for this discussion, I think you're moving right along. I mean, we're focusing on our project objectives right now, trying to put a little bit finer point on what those are. So I'm not sure if the council is satisfied with the revisions made to the first bullet under project objectives, which is focused on commuter parking. But, you know, if we could maybe get thumbs up from the council about at least that bullet point and then just take it, the list, you know, one at a time, go through each item. Again, we are looking for high-level direction at this stage. As Julie mentioned, Tom Brubaker, an attorney with extensive public-private partnership development agreement drafting experience, will be at the table along with the developer's team, creating many more details about the outline that is presented here for this MOU. And it will, of course, come back for a future review by this council. The second project objective is the one I'm not as clear about right now regarding MICA. And it's my understanding, context-wise, that the reference to the inclusion, provided the inclusion is feasible, wasn't just about a financial feasibility. It was also about design feasibility. And so I'm sure that Mr. Weinstein and Mr. Price can speak more to the context where that language came from. But as Councilmember Weicher pointed out, there will be a separately negotiated MOU between Main Street and MICA, again, where there's going to be a finer point put on funding and feasibility and all of that. So if we could just maybe go down the list as a framework and getting thumbs up from council for each of the bullet points, that would be helpful.
Hey, Bruce.
I'm going to just go back to where we started and move to pass resolution number 1558, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a memorandum of understanding MOU exclusively with Main Street Property Group LLC for the proposed commuter parking and Town Center mixed-use project, which MOU will be subject to future council review and approval. And if I could, let's see if there's a second. There's a second. If I could speak to it for a moment. I'm kind of going back to, we've given you lots of verbal direction here. You know that parking matters to us. You know that MICA matters to us. We're going to get to touch it again multiple times. I'm okay with just leaving it at that for tonight. And I think that, yeah, I think Dave will be supportive of me on that. And so, yeah, so I, so I'm going to suggest that, I'm not even going to offer any amendments to this. I'm just going to just suggest we do that and let you guys work off verbal input that you've got from us.
Well, I'd say there's, there's probably, I think there's six seconds to your motion. So with that said, counsel, any further discussion?
Can I just say thank you for the community engagement that both organizations in the city are going to do? Because I know our public is keenly, keenly interested in having every, access to every detail that you guys are conceptualizing. So thank you for that because that's where the success of this is going to be.
Well, and I, I don't know if I'm out of order, but I would actually personally like to move to table this agenda bill for no more than 45 days. I think we only have two meetings during that next, during the next 45 days to where really counsel's thoughts could be more clearly defined and offered. Because if we've got a year period, I don't think taking 45 more days to kind of get people pointed in the, really the right direction out of the starting blocks is necessarily a bad thing. So that would be my proposal.
Deb, I'm going to look to you for some guidance in terms of Robert's Rules of Order. Oh, where's Ally? She's always our, our backup. Well, that's what I'm asking. I want to make sure I, we haven't had a motion to table for quite some time. I could have said, can we hold off on this? But I know it's the right way to do is to say move to table it. Is there a second? Okay, so we do need a second. Is there a second? Hearing none, it fails for a lack of a second. In the meantime, I think we'll figure out what's involved in tabling something. At least I know I will.
Yeah, so if someone wants to table the motion, there needs to be a second. No debate on it, and you can't amend that motion. And there has to be a majority vote of the council to pass that.
So we'll file that away for future.
And I just want to clarify for Councilmember Andrell. When a motion is made and there is no second, we do not record it in the minutes, just so you know.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And out of respect for your first night here, I would say if you could catch up with Carrie or Julie on the RFQ, the proposals, blah, blah, blah. Like, this has been a lot of conversations for a long time.
Well, and I, I read those. I wasn't in all of the conversations, but I, I've read the papers. So I still have questions.
Okay, great. So seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Sorry, I spoke too quickly. There was a nay from Councilmember Andrell. Motion passes 6-1. All right. So that wasn't at all painful, was it? And I can see the room clearing from here. All right, so with that, we move on to the second item of regular business, Agenda Bill 5526. And thank you, everyone in the team for being here. Agenda Bill 5526, consideration of proposed adoption of an emergency ordinance, establishing interim design and concealment standards for deployment of small cell facilities.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Of course, my name is Evan Maximum, your Director of Community Planning and Development. I apologize, the hour is starting to get to me, so I may stutter a bit as I, as I warm up again. So this is a late addition to your council packet. And I do realize this is something that's a little bit unusual for the city of Mercer Island. But what you have in front of you is a draft emergency ordinance that would establish interim design standards for small cell facilities. What I thought I'd do here is provide a little bit of background and context around why we're bringing, again, this, this somewhat unusual action to the city council. Emergency ordinances are of the nature where they are not advertised in advance. Hence, the council has the option to address the emergency. Provide you a little, little bit of background and context. We're responding to a new rule that was passed by the FCC in late September. We are proposing a draft emergency ordinance. I'll go over some of the terms within that set of regulations before you tonight. And then describe how I would anticipate that we would move forward depending on the council action at the end of this conversation. So a little bit of context on the FCC's, what I'm calling both in the agenda bill and in the presentation tonight, their new rule. and in the presentation tonight, their new rule. This was a rule that was issued on September 27th related to small cell facilities. So to remind the city council, it's been a little while since we've talked about small cells. Small cells are intended to provide primarily high-speed content to your mobile device, whether that's a cellphone, or your tablet, or even streaming video to your house, or something of that nature. This rule took effect yesterday. We have had no small cell applications in the last 24 hours, which was something I was paying close attention to ever since Monday morning. The rule affects new small cell applications moving forward from yesterday, whether it's in the city of Mercer Island, or any other jurisdiction within the United States. It does contain significant changes to the city's authority to regulate small cell facilities. So again, small cell facilities are not quite the same as the wireless communication facilities. These aren't the big monopoles. These are the things that we've been seeing a little bit around the city mounted on our Puget Sound Energy power pole, our wooden poles. The current code doesn't provide any authorization for small cell facilities. The way we authorized the current deployment, the T-Mobile deployment, was through the approval of a franchise agreement in 2016. That franchise agreement was with Crown Castle, a provider of small cell facilities on behalf of T-Mobile, and it authorized specifically 39 locations. Of those 39 locations, I believe 32 have been installed. The remaining six or seven are still working their way through the system, either in terms of litigation, or actually working through the system, maybe with Puget Sound Energy. All of those facilities are something that we're anticipating we will see installed for T-Mobile. That approach is no longer one we can really use moving forward. For wireless communication facilities, the monopoles, our code does provide some allowances for those, but we limit the location. We limit it to island crest, our town center commercial zones, and along the I-90 corridor. We prohibit wireless communication facilities in our residential neighborhoods, by and large. And what we have in those wireless communication facilities are really design standards intended to address big monopoles, not the small cell deployment that we'll see on utility poles. I'm sharing this with you because it is the basis for the draft code that you see here, which is very specific to small cells. And you might be wondering, well, why can't we use our other code provisions? And it's because they're really aimed at something that's a very different type of facility design. So, speaking to the new rule from the FCC, and again, this is a high-level summary of about 120-page document. Obviously, I've not covered every point. But there's a couple main points that I would like to call to your attention. The city cannot materially inhibit the deployment or the installation of small cell facilities. So we are no longer allowed to ask the question of whether or not a small cell facility is necessary to close a significant gap, which was the test that we used when we were talking about the franchise agreement about two years ago. All we can focus on at this point is the design, the design standard of the actual installation, and we can focus on that design standard to the extent that it does not materially inhibit the deployment of a small cell facility. They have, in this new rule, also made it clear that colocation, which is a term that's used fairly heavily in the federal statute, means the location of a small cell facility on an existing utility pole, whether or not there is an existing small cell facility on it already. So a PSE pole that just has power, maybe cable connections, but does not have a small cell facility on it currently, would be considered a colocation under the new FCC rule. This is, again, a departure in how we've administered this up until now. And then, new small cell facilities, where we do not have a PSE pole already in place, are allowed. So we had, as part of our franchise agreement discussions, you may recall, we had an underground utility district, and there was some question as to how that was defined. We are actually defining that district in the draft ordinance in front of you, because we do have specific design standards for that kind of area. But we are not prohibiting the deployment of a small cell facility in an underground utility district. We're not allowed to. FCC new rule also sets some bounds around the city's ability to establish design standards for a small cell facility. These standards have to be reasonable. These standards can be no more burdensome than other type of infrastructure design standards, and they need to be objective and published in advance of the application for a small cell facility, hence my close attention to an application coming in the door in the last 24 hours. The ordinance in front of you obviously is intended to achieve all three of these tests. And then the last item I'll really focus on as far as the new rule goes, is that the FCC did clarify their shot clock for the approval of small cell facilities. For a new colocation, again, this is the placement of a small cell facility on a PSE pole, even if there is no existing small cell facility on that site, we are required to approve that application within 60 days. For a new small cell facility, and really I'm contemplating this primarily in areas where we do have undergrounded facilities, we are obligated to approve that small cell facility installation within 90 days. That 60-day or 90-day timeline does stop, it pauses, if the city requests additional information to demonstrate that the small cell facility complies with the design standards that we'll have published in advance, presuming city council decides to approve this ordinance. If the city fails to act within either of those timelines, we are assuming that the small cell facility application will be automatically approved. So I'm going to switch gears off the new rule and on to the emergency ordinance, if that's, if there's any questions at the moment, or I'll bowl on till the end. So the draft ordinance, what we've done here is really trying to just provide you a little bit of context on why we're going down this route. The emergency here is really based on the requirement to publish standards in advance of the application. There are, as I've just explained to you, no design standards in our code right now related to small cell facilities. We do have reason to believe that at least one applicant will be submitting an application for the deployment of another 46 small cell antennas around Mercer Island. They have been talking to us about that deployment for the last six to seven months. We initially framed that conversation with that applicant around developing a new franchise agreement using our former standard and former approach, asking that applicant to demonstrate that they were closing a significant gap in coverage about September, a little bit earlier. That applicant really stopped talking to us about the franchise agreement altogether. So I am anticipating the applications will come in the door fairly soon. Just to remind us a little bit around terminology here for the purposes of reviewing the draft regulations, I have focused my comments in the PowerPoint primarily around two aspects of the small cell design. By the way, this is a picture of one of the small cell deployments for the T-Mobile site that occurred in the last two years. You'll note at the top, you see the panel antennas. These are the pole-top mounted antennas that came out of our franchise agreement. And you'll see it kind of mid-pole, probably 10, 12 feet up in the air, the equipment cabinet that's mounted to the side. These are in addition, of course, to the other features that you see on this particular PSE pole, the transformer, the cross cable connections, Comcast, things of that nature. You will see that there's two PSE poles in this particular location. The way the deployment works, they essentially install the new pole, move all of the utilities over to the new pole, and then take out the old pole. Because you have multiple utility providers on a pole, it sometimes takes quite a bit of time to get the old pole out. So what I've tried to do with this slide is really hit the high points of the eight or nine pages of code language that I have in front of you this evening. I'm happy to go through any of the specifics. But just to hit the high points here, these standards are intended to regulate design, but not location or installation for the reasons I explained. We are looking at where feasible, trying to locate the equipment. So this would be the equipment cabinet on the side of the utility pole, and any conduit, wires, things of that nature that connect to the antenna as much as possible inside the pole. So if we're talking about a light pole in town center, or along the freeway, or somewhere of that nature, you might not see very much, except for the antenna mounted presumably at the top, or near the top on the side. Ground-mounted equipment, the other option, of course, would be to install underground. That typically is a less-desired location because it does have increased cost to a provider, someone who's building this, because you have to protect that equipment from groundwater and drainage. Ground-mounted equipment, so this would be equipment that's mounted on the dirt at landscape level, if you will, would need to be stilt through the use of a concealment plan. The concealment plan is, by and large, articulating a vision or a desired outcome for concealment. It's not articulating specific requirements. We are trying to leave some flexibility to see what kinds of concealment would be best. We are prohibiting signage, illumination, and noise. Noise has come up a little bit in the current T-Mobile deployment. You may have heard some comments from folks that lived nearby. There is a mild hum that comes out of the equipment box. Usually, it's a coolant fan. The current installation by Crown Castle is working on both a noise study and ways to mitigate that noise. What we have here is the more explicit reference to our nuisance regulations. Those regulations would govern any kind of recurring irritating noise that might be audible to adjacent residences. The antenna can be located in one of two places under these draft rules, pardon me, three places. Primarily, we're expecting pole-top mounting. Pole-top mounting is of the type that I showed a picture of a moment ago, where you see the antennas located at the very top of the pole, usually on a pole-top extender, and sometimes with a slightly taller pole. So you'll see in the draft regulations both an allowance to increase the height of the pole, that's to allow the small cell to be mounted well above the wires, and then the pole-top extender, which is actually the bracket, if you will, that holds that small cell antenna on the top. For the pole-top mountings, we're looking for that pole-top antenna to be located within a sleeve, and that sleeve to be designed to mimic as closely as possible the actual diameter, size, and color of the pole. So in theory, this looks like a very tall PSE pole that does not have obvious equipment up at the top. So somewhat distinct from the picture I showed you a few moments ago. Side-mounted antennas, we are trying to get as flush as possible to the PSE pole. There are some minimum clearance requirements that we need to keep in mind when doing so. So we essentially have articulated a standard and then noted that we have some flexibility if it's just technically not feasible. That technically not feasible usually comes from a communication between the city and PSE. All wires, conduit, equipment essentially is placed inside a shroud. So the shroud would either be conduit, it would be a sleeve for the flexible portion of the wires connecting from the conduit to the antenna, colored to match the pole. That's the design standards that we put together in a nutshell. To generate these design standards, what we did was really look at some of our neighboring jurisdictions. Cities of Federal Way and Des Moines were the two that I focused on primarily in drafting the regulations and coordinating with, actually, Municipal Resource Services Center. MRSC just released a blog post, which if you have not seen, I can happily forward on to you, describing some of the effects of this new FCC rule. After drafting these regulations, I became aware that actually the city of Bellevue just recently adopted regulations, likely, I'm guessing, for the same reason that we're talking about it tonight, to trying to get in advance of this FCC rule. These regulations are intended to be on par with our neighboring jurisdictions. So I intentionally have not pushed the envelope here, but I have tried to put something together that would provide some community protection around design. Because, again, of course, if we don't have design standards published in advance, a small cell application comes in the door, I have no tools to regulate design at all. There is a procedural component to that draft emergency ordinance as well. What we've set here is essentially a land use review that would be required concurrent with the right-of-way use permit application. Land use review has a public notification component. Council may recall that you had a public notification component in your earlier franchise agreement. It's notification, so we put it in the weekly bulletin. We are not proposing to mail it within 300 feet, or post the sign on-site, or invite public comment. The reason I have stayed away from that, that would be the Type III process. My concern with the Type III process is really having enough time to finish that process within the 60-day shot clock. So recall that the Type III process has a 30-day public comment period and a 14-day public appeal period, together equalling about 45 days with administrative lead-up times. It sucks up about five of, five, pardon me. It sucks up sufficient time that I'm concerned I can't actually meet the 60-day shot clock. I can't, I can't speak this evening. It is intended to allow us to meet the shot clock the way we proposed this. The right-of-way use permit will become more of the administrative aspect. So this is around traffic control, technical installation, coordination with the public utilities. So that's an overview of the draft emergency ordinance. The point of this, as I alluded to a moment ago, is to give us a short-term solution while we actually put together the long-term approach to regulating wireless facilities on Mercer Island. So these design standards, really, we're just trying to take care of the new rule as it takes effect. They're based on the standards of nearby cities. If there's unanimous city council approval tonight, and I realize this is an awkward thing to ask you your first meeting of the year, and perhaps the first meeting with a council member, so I do apologize for that. If we want the rules to take effect immediately, it does need to be unanimous approval. If you decide to go with a majority city council approval, it's subject to referendum, this ordinance. So we have 30 days from the date of publication. We're anticipating publication would occur next, a week from tomorrow, the 23rd, if memory serves. So the effective date of the ordinance would then become February 22nd. And of course, if city council declines to adopt the ordinance, then this conversation might be moot for a little bit. Looking forward, we are asking the city council to schedule a public hearing. This is a requirement of your emergency ordinance and adoption of your interim regulations. We're recommending a public hearing date of March 5th, starting at 7 o'clock. Again, the emergency ordinance establishes interim design standards. By state law, those interim design standards are only good for six months. City council can extend that six-month timeline. I'm going to hearken back to our joint city council planning commission meeting in December, and just share with you somewhat directly, I don't think the planning commission will actually be able to get through this review in the next six months. Recall that we have a number of items already on their plate. So I am anticipating that we will need you to extend this interim set of regulations, probably for another six months, possibly a little bit longer, to allow for an actual thoughtful public process. I would anticipate really starting this fall of 2019, the permanent review, if you will, and working from there. The other observation I would offer is, I do believe this FCC new rule is under lawsuit at the moment, and we may see some continuing evolutions, if you will, in what that rule says and requires of the city as we move forward, giving ourselves a little bit of time to see how this shakes out. It may prevent us from adopting regulations that we immediately have to amend. All right, cover the bulk of this slide, so I'll push on. So with that, Mayor, City Council, I do have the recommended motions from the packet on the screen for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any, before moving forward.
Counsel, any questions? I'm seeing Wendy Benson, Dave.
Thank you for that overview. Evan, I just want to be really clear. If we don't pass it unanimously tonight, we have no design standards through the next month, month and a half. And any permit applications that come in for this can look and sound and be anyway, anyplace, anyhow.
That is my understanding, councilmember.
Okay, you made that clear. Thank you.
Great. Benson?
I just want to make, again, these are temporary design standards. And so, and you mentioned that as far as the process, we'll have a public hearing in then six months or maybe a year down the road. But I just want to make it clear that I understand that we're going to have opportunities to suggest changes. And I think I mentioned a couple ones I had to you. And I guess it would be helpful to me, and maybe to others, in the near term, that you provide us a kind of an idea of what is actually mandatory in the temporary regs. I mean, I don't want to spend time looking at things when you're going to tell me there's no way because it's not permitted. So I just want to have an idea of what kind of leeway we have during this, during the time between now and when we actually adopt the permanent regulations. time between now and when we actually adopt the permanent regulations. So does that make sense? I just want to.
It does, Councilmember Wong. I've had a little chance to think on that since you first relayed it. May I respond briefly tonight, and then I'm happy to pursue it further on March 5th, presumably. By and large, the specific regulations that you see in Attachment A are not mandated by the FCC rule. There are two aspects that I think would be very wise for the city council to include if you do nothing else tonight. The first would be to allow small cell facilities within the city, so we're not in this weird position of receiving applications that our code actually prohibits the approval of. And the second would be some kind of process to issue a decision on those, so whether it's the Type II review process that I've suggested to or otherwise. The rest of this is design standards that are intended to hide the thing. And the FCC has been very careful to not specify that we have to adopt design standards and what those entail. They simply preserve that authority for the jurisdiction moving forward.
Great, Dave.
Mine's super simple. On your third sub-bullet, you address that noise is not currently, noise light is not currently governed by our nuisance ordinance, and so your intention is to make it part of that, as part of this.
The language on the third bullet here, so the prohibition on signage and illumination is specific to this ordinance and specific to small cells. With noise, I've actually referenced our nuisance ordinance, which is the common approach in this area for just recurring fan noises, humming, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other council member? Lisa.
I just wanted to say, Evan, thanks for the presentation, and you had briefed me earlier, and I thought that was very helpful. I just wanted to kind of clarify the difference between, I'm sorry, the Type II permit review and the Type III. And as I understand it, the concerns about creating a higher level of review Type III would be concerns whether staff could then meet the shot clock and failure to meet the shot clock would result in an automatic granting of it?
Either an automatic granting and, well, and this is perhaps me wandering into legal territory, so I may get in trouble, but whether or not we're materially inhibiting the deployment of the small cell.
Okay. And then I guess we also talked a little bit about, and just so this is on the record, is it also kind of an issue, at least it would be in my mind, of even though that might give an opportunity for more public involvement, does it kind of create an expectation on the part of the public that we can do more than we really can?
Very much so, council member. My concern, so speaking to the franchise agreement for a moment, which is old news, if you will, at this point, but we did send out a notice of application soliciting public comment for our public comment period to neighbors within, I think, 150 feet of the small cell location. The majority of those applications, we heard nothing, just also to say that directly. But on 10 or 12 of those applications, we essentially heard concerns related to health risks associated with wireless antennas, which of course were prohibited from reviewing at all by the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. We heard some concerns about the design, the aesthetic. There was an expectation on the part of the public, I think, that they could meaningfully comment on the small cell and staff could meaningfully do something about their concern. Unfortunately, those standards were by and large very direct and clear. In that case, the applicant had designed to those standards, and so really we were unsuccessful affecting any change in the application in response to public comment. So I'm trying to avoid that situation here by providing notification, but intentionally not soliciting public comment where I don't think public comment is something we can meaningfully respond to.
Great, thanks. I just wanted that to be clear. Thank you very much.
Get Benson.
Evan, just a quick question. Is the shot clock language in the code?
The shot clock, the shot clock language actually is established both by the FCC rules and state law, I believe, so I have not included it in the draft code. Our code is designed to allow us to comply with that language, which we have to do regardless of whether or not it's in our code.
Great, thanks.
Celine?
Well, I like to, I have one question, that is, when you were drafting this, I think it's absolutely fantastic that you were picking up off what other communities did, so that there's a degree of consistency. The second question I have is, when we spent an inordinate amount of time on the small cells a couple of years ago, we, if I recall correctly, in terms of the aesthetics element that we focused a lot of time on, we prioritized, and I'm going to go from memory, I think it was the health and well-being of the tree, the view, and then to the extent possible, placing these by arterials, collector arterials, et cetera, so street, street assignment. Is there any room for any of that in this?
I don't see how, is the direct answer, because I think all three of those things translate into location in the end. So what I've really tried to focus on is, someone says I want to put a pole here, I'm going to try and make it the best-looking pole possible, but I'm not going to talk about whether or not it's here. And that's what I understand the new rule requires.
Okay. All right, just one more. At some point, you know, I feel like whether there's a study session or maybe we get some great links to some great papers in terms of 5G and where it's going, because for those of you who follow the tech industry, CES just took place, and there was a notable commentator who basically did comment on how everything is headed 5G and what that could mean. The final concluding statement he said is that when physics meet zoning laws, both of them provide pretty rigid, prove pretty rigid, and we're caught in the middle. So I think one of the things I would want to be aware of is the direction that legislation is heading. Some people are saying that there could be some degree of small cell in front of arguably every single home and the extent to which this community and/or communities of our size will be able to manage and mandate. So I think that would just be something I know I would want to keep my eyes on.
I'm certainly familiar with some resources that I can provide council with, and I'm happy to generate a study session.
That'd be super. So with that, unless there's other questions, we'd love a motion.
Motion time.
Go, Celine.
I move to declare that an emergency exists necessitating the ordinance number 19-02 take effect immediately upon passage by the city council.
Is there a second? First and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to suspend the city council rules of procedure 6.3, requiring a second reading of an ordinance.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-02, establishing interim design and concealment standards for small cell facilities deployment.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
I move to schedule a public hearing on ordinance number 19-02 for March 5, 2019 at 7:00 PM.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, council, do we keep going or do we take a short break?
Keep going.
Keep going, okay.
Wishful thinking.
All right. So with that, our final item of regular business this evening is Agenda Bill 5528, the 2019 first quarter sustainability update, and for that we welcome Sustainability Communications Manager Ross Freeman.
My roof's not on the picture.
Send a photo for me. Thank you, council, for hosting me. This is the, our effort to have an approximately twice-a-year check on, check-in on our sustainability program, and so this is the Q1 of 2019 program update. And as you saw in our agenda bill, I'll be focusing on a few items tonight. Wanted to come back to some of the council goal three items that were on the docket for this year, and then just look at a few other major program updates and kind of leave the rest for other discussion or follow-ups offline. Probably goes without saying, there are some challenges, as I alluded to in the text, just about getting as much done as many in the community and many of us would like, just revolving around staffing and capacity and the nature of the split positions, so won't go into that too much further, but it's there still. And whenever we have a lot of significant communications issues, that's a pretty big challenge, juggle with sustainability portion of the job. We'll move in just as a reminder to kind of what the commitments are that are underway right now for the city, just to make sure we have all on the same page. I wanted to touch briefly on the power of collaborating with our regional partners in the K4C, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration, and also the benefits we can accrue by putting some time towards legislation in Olympia as Councilmember Bassett was doing today and that I do sometimes as well. It really helps us amplify our voice beyond just the perimeter of the island. We'll jump into council updates, and then just as a reminder, I won't go into this in detail tonight, but the year ahead is really looking like trying to catch up on a few years of greenhouse gas data entry, working with some of our most engaged citizen volunteers, including Dr. Harrington, who spoke in the public appearances on getting further down the road with our action plan and looking at scenarios around what has the biggest bang for the buck on sort of decarbonizing. And then there will be a lot of climate legislation this session. We don't know what's going to land yet, but boy, there's a lot in motion, and finally, there's quite a few people in Olympia who are supportive, it appears. And lastly, as you all know, we are making a major transition to another hauler for our waste recycling compost, and that will involve as-yet unknown amounts of outreach later this year. So you've seen these quotes before, it's in our mission statement, and just wanted to kind of reemphasize that, that this is something that the city has endorsed and the council has endorsed over time, and I do like that EPA quote just to kind of summarize where the current thinking is for many people in the community about these issues. Yes?
Quick question.
Yes.
On previous slide. In the, in the city mission statement, is it underlined, protect the environment, or is that?
No, that's for me, that's my effort to draw your eye to that piece.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think there's any underlines in the actual mission statement that I'm aware of. The current commitments that we have in place, this has been referenced a number of times, but just to kind of refresh, back in 2007, the city did commit to reducing total greenhouse gases on the islands, that's the whole community, not just city operations, 80% by 2050, and that was really informed by what was happening with other communities, where the K4C was going, what King County was committing to, trying to get everybody on the same page and, you know, working together to achieve that. In 2016, as the K4C delved into this more, there's a five or six-page climate commitments document that spells out the platform that all of the endorsing cities are working off of, and that fleshed out a little bit more, that there's a sub-goal, if you like, of achieving 90% renewable electricity supply by 2030. On the right there, the bottom-right image is just the current member cities and partners. We do, we have picked up the Port of Seattle, and Sound Transit is a sort of auditing member as well, so we're now seeing K4C represent 1.6 million people, which is 80% of King County's population and a really significant portion of PSE's customer base. So just to dig in a little bit on why does it make sense to collaborate on these issues? It's because we often have a lot of shared interests and that, again, Mercer Island, me at halftime on this, and a lot of other competing demands, it makes a lot of sense to try to maximize our influence through the K4C process and with our other regional partners. So just to pull this out in a little more detail, here's kind of a case study. 100% of our power comes from PSE on this island. About a third of that, as most of you know, is still derived from coal power, coming from an out-of-state plant. Meanwhile, 50% of King County's electricity is derived from PSE, and King County contains 50% of all of PSE's customers in a 10-county region, so it's a very big customer and has some influence. So if we ally ourselves through the K4C with these other entities, we have a shared interest in trying to clean up our portfolio, and really what that looks like is renewables and efficiency measures. So if you look at what that could achieve, on the left there, Centralia Washington hosts the Trans Alta coal-powered power plant, and there's a previous agreement that's been in place now for many years that sees the closure of that plant portion in 2020 and the other portion in 2025. And the great outcome of that story is that all of the power that PSE draws from that plant will be replaced by two things, a wind farm down in Lewis County that we are one of the investors in through PSE, and then solar at the site of the coal mine that generated the coal to put into the power plant. So it's a really nice full-circle story. Meanwhile, over in Montana, the remaining other coal-fired power plant is in Colstrip, Montana, and PSE is one of six joint owners of that facility drawing power from that. And as it stands right now, the current agreements are that Plants 1 and 2 would close in 2022, and it's starting to look like Plants 3 and 4 might close as soon as 2027. This is of really great interest to any city in the region that is powered by PSE because this is a big reason why our grid power can't be cleaner. If you look at Seattle City Light customers, their grid power is about 90 to 95% clean, and ours has that one-third coal component. So what's happening in that scenario is that there's a lot of advocacy work and joint efforts across the region to make sure that when that plant is retired, the replacement is renewables, cleaner purchases off the grid, and there may be a stepping stone transition of natural gas generation to be determined. So net result, when that, those two closures are done by 2030, King County's power mix jumps to 75% renewable, and our power mix would improve even more. And why does this matter for us? Because half of our emissions on the island, half of our assessed emissions are due to our use of electricity. So by tackling this multi-year issue that moves incrementally or sometimes doesn't move at all some years, when we do get to that endpoint, it will have a huge influence on the amount of emissions that we attribute, you know, from Mercer Island, so it'll have a really, really big effect for us.
Just a quick question. Just by selecting the renewable option from PSE, don't I remove my household from that aspect?
If you're paying for green power right now? Yes and no. You are helping, of course, you can't separate yourself from the general power that's aggregated on the grid, so as the electrons go, you're, what you're doing when you pay for green power program is you're helping PSE invest in new cleaner generation with the idea that the more that's created to meet future demand, the more customers are going to be, the portion of their mix is coming from green versus historic sort of legacy fuels. So it's, it's, it helps them invest in a greener future, but you, some portion of your supply, basically an average of a third of the supply at any time, is coming from coal, unless you happen to have solar on your roof, and if you do have solar on your roof in the summer, Mayor Berlin, all of your power is coming from your clean solar.
Actually, we are almost, we're pretty close to full year.
Yes, yeah, and if you have sized it right, you could almost cover your entire annual needs, but the only time you can really claim you're running out of green power is solar on the roof. roof because it goes to the first user, which is your house. If you can't use all of it, it goes to your neighbors. If they can't use it, it works its way back into the grid. So to quickly review the council goal three, this was in the packet, I just wanted to touch on a few of these items. Number one was that drafting of sustainability plan. I've alluded to this a little bit, but this has been a long time coming. It's tough to carve out dedicated uninterrupted time for something like this, and there's been lots of work underway, but it hasn't happened under the umbrella of one comprehensive plan. So that's what we're working on now with some volunteers, including some of the members of the Sustainable Mercer Island Community Group. And one of the things we need to do is assess where is the biggest bang for the buck and getting some historic data entered. And 1A, we had talked about inviting school district participation. There's some collaboration underway through the green teams. A number of students are getting really involved in solar advocacy, and a few students were involved all the way through the summer in our Solarize program. So we have made some inroads. 1B, some of these early action items, the bike-friendly community, I'm in contact right now with the local advocacy group Neighbors in Motion to see what that application would look like, acknowledging that it would likely need to be led significantly by them, although they need the city to probably enact some items to qualify. So we're discussing that right now. The next cutoff application period is later in the fall, I believe. Green Power signups, we've had great success with in the past, as Councilmember Weicher knows and others of you. We could certainly do a push on that again. We have great adoption in the community for our size, probably about 900 participants now out of about 9,000 accounts. So that's very significant market penetration. We could give it another shot. We've done a number of home energy retrofits over the years at different neighborhoods, but we haven't hit all the neighborhoods. PSC has the data to tell them which are the most likely candidate houses, what year, what decade they were built, and what they're, you know, what kind of energy use they have and can target those appropriately. So we did that a couple of years ago, and that went pretty well when you really narrow that market down. Styrofoam container ban, we had talked about. Staffing on that is probably the biggest concern. I was the one who led the plastic bag ban when I started four years ago, and that was, we weren't reinventing the wheel there. A number of other communities had done it already, but that's considered a simpler, easier lift than a styrofoam ban, just in terms of ferreting out the details. So I'm not sure that's feasible at this point. And then sustainability and city purchasing procurement, that'll be explored this year. And the last two items, I'll talk about these shortly. What's the update on STAR? Some of you have heard about this and have talked to me about it. Julie sent an email out a while ago, just giving you a small heads up. And then where are we with our greenhouse gas tracking? So you probably remember this table. This has the 49 goals and objectives that STAR measures. Within each of these, there's probably four or five different actual measurement points. So they each represent more than one measurable item. And during our discussions over the past 12 months, we had decided to take a first swing at STAR by going after the 21 leading indicators. This is a subset of measurements that STAR organizers felt like were a representative cross-section and kind of help you do a test, a reality check, and see where you might stand if you were to fully certify your community. So it's a dry run and involves gathering a significant amount of data, but nothing like the full certification process. So these areas circled in red here, you'll see there's only 15 of them, that's because some of those boxes have several metrics represented. And the outcome of that, we essentially attempted 20 of the 21 leading indicators. The 21st is a very, very heavy lift with some GIS analysis and a number of data points from different data sets that we decided not to do at this point because, as I'll explain shortly, there's some big changes in the way that this will move forward. We didn't update, upload the findings to STAR's online system because that's now probably sort of in suspension. That would allow for the easiest comparisons, but I was able to dig into a few metrics from other communities that have their items still on the STAR website. And a lot of things we found, the average incomes, crime rates, some of the demographic data, those were not news to us. But some of the other items were interesting. For example, for this region, the Seattle Tacoma Bellevue region, the living wage standard is considered to be $42,000 a year. And on Mercer Island, 13% of households do not meet the living wage standard, which I found interesting. Compare that to King County Tacoma, you see the percentages over there on the right. The amount of household income spent on housing and transportation is 71%. 45% is kind of the recommended sustainable amount for an average household. And of course, that's pushed up by the cost of housing here. If you look at King County Tacoma, you'll see numbers a little bit closer to that 45% recommended level. And then you may be familiar, I think that you've had a presentation on our Tree Canopy Study, and we've been waiting for that data set for several years. And the interesting thing coming out of that is that according to STAR's metrics and evaluation, 73% of our land area could qualify as green infrastructure under their standards compared to what you find 38, 32 in King County Tacoma. Just some highlights I thought I'd pull out to show the value of parsing through these 21 indicators. And this is, again, it was a way of sort of easy snapshot versus other communities. Now, what I will point out here is that STAR has been acquired by the U.S. Green Building Council. So late last year, we learned that, and these are the people that run the LEED program. And we had originally perceived it to be maybe just adding capacity, but what it turns out is that the Green Building Council is fully retiring STAR. The brand is going away, and it's going to be replaced by the LEED for Cities certification. Right now, we don't know what that certification will contain. They're in the midst of developing the measurable items and the protocols for doing that measurement that may come out in, they're saying, late spring. So until that time, we're not clear on what it would be to, the effort required, the level of work, time commitment to actually certify under LEED for Cities program. So what STAR has said is that they are going to give communities essentially a sort of year free pass, think about it, and recommended to me when I have spoken with them that, you know, finish the 21 leading indicators process. It's a useful way of getting familiar with the data sets. But then stay tuned, many of those metrics will probably show up in STAR's LEED for Cities, excuse me, in Green Building Council's LEED for Cities program. We anticipate that some of the less scientific, classic environmental science measures and more of the equality, equity, social measures that STAR has emphasis on, I think those will be the things that show up and enhance LEED's program, but to be determined as it stands right now. So that's a work in progress. So right now, we're in a holding pattern. We don't have any, there's no point going into full certification with STAR, and they will be retiring the certification process at the end of this year. Cities that are already certified get a couple of years, and then they have to decide how they're going to transition. So just a few other updates on other major programs to wrap this up. Greenhouse gases, where do things stand? This is our emissions by sector, and many of you have heard me speak about this before. The biggest piece of the pie there at 49% is that, you know, you're seeing, let's see, if I have the, it's mobile combustion. So that's basically vehicle use. 25% is electricity use for buildings. So when you, you know, you add those together, you know, you get 74% of our emissions are just from two sectors. So those are the areas to go after. You might remember that a few years ago, actually 2018, the breakdown was slightly different. There's just evolution in the way that the factors that are used to convert different energy uses into emissions. So that's changed a little bit, but the good news is, as you'll see shortly, the purple column at the very end, last year, that was above the blue line. And because we have used updated emissions factors, essentially the way that we convert power use and other things, how much CO2 they're responsible for, it turns out that our per capita emissions now for 2016 have been recalculated and are basically hitting right there at the target for the K4C average. So that's the good news for the night. But yes.
What is stationary combustion? Cars at lights?
So stationary combustion is things like burning natural gas for heating. That's the biggest one. There'd be other, you know, industrial facilities, we don't have much of that. So here on the island, it's probably natural gas boilers, natural gas heating. So per capita is looking better, but the total emissions have improved as well with these finer-tuned numbers. However, we're still 18% above a 2020 interim target for total community emissions. So with that said, with that limited capacity, again, it's important to focus on the key sectors where we can do the most, have the biggest outcomes. Some of these are multi-year efforts, but when they pay out, they deliver really significant changes. So looking at the vehicle emissions sector, that's half of all of our emissions for the whole island. Working on solutions like SOV alternatives, we've done a lot of that work with some of our first mile, last mile pilot projects. You're going to hear about those programs next month at a different council meeting and hear how those have gone and what's on the horizon. Helping give people access to transit, transit has far lower emissions per person than driving SOVs around. There's other solutions this year especially that are going to take place in Olympia, like cleaning up the fuel supply for vehicles. That's called a clean fuel standard. Other states on the West Coast have one, and we don't. And then in supporting increased EV ownership, even though right now, if you plug your EV in here, some of it's being powered by coal power some of the time, you are still doing better than a vehicle that's burning all gas all the time. And then looking at the electricity use in the building sector, that's 25% of our emissions. There's quite a bit going on in Olympia on tightening building efficiency standards and even allowing communities to push beyond the state standards temporarily, sort of stretch goals. There's a big effort underway in the governor's latest sort of environmental greenhouse gas package, his bills to decarbonize state utilities, sort of accelerate a schedule of cleaning up their fuel supply. And then there's other solutions like seeking cleaner power mixes. We've done this for city operations by buying into wind power for the city or on a smaller level, home efficiency campaigns.
Ross?
Yeah.
Question on the vehicle emissions. How do you measure vehicle emissions?
Well, the best way to do it is knowing the vehicle weight, the type of engine, the mileage traveled.
You get all that from license registrations or?
Well, I could, yeah. Those data sets are available, but that's the standard methodology is to know how heavy it is, how far it's going, what kind of engine it is, and what fuel it uses.
I'm asking because you're saying 49% of our emissions are from vehicles.
Oh, yeah. The metric that's used to get that high-level measurement is actually vehicle miles traveled. So those are regional data sets that are parsed out by community and provided by the PSRC. And some communities have a fine-tuning ability because they have their own traffic models for their whole community, and that gives them an even tighter sense. We don't have that, so we have to rely on a data set from PSRC that is parsed out for us. And it's a mixture of essentially residents driving around and then some portion of vehicles that travel across the island that are not residents. Just to wrap up that thought on the city's wind power purchase, we've talked about this a little bit before, but a real quick update. PSC offered this green direct program a couple of years ago for major consumers, and we thought it was a really good bet for us to invest in a new, very large, 40 turbine wind farm, 140 megawatts in Lewis County. And when that's online, that will, essentially, our investment will make all of the city's municipal purchases 100% green power. It's probably going to open by the end of this year. If it's delayed after June, PSC will pay for our current green offsets.
Ross, you keep using the word investment, and I don't, given the current situation with the budget, I would, we're not using investment dollars, we're buying our electricity from these sources.
Yeah, we're contracting, we're contracting for future power.
Right.
Yeah, so we don't have the power yet. But the only way for them to, it's good clarification, the only way for them to build something this large is to acquire a bunch of investors, if we like, who are going to pay money for power in the future. We haven't paid the money yet.
And that power, does that get to you by a separate wire?
No, it doesn't.
So are those electrons co-mingled?
They are co-mingled as it stands right now. Yeah. No, it's true. I mean, it's one of the challenging natures of this, that only very, very large customers get to have that direct green power. Somebody like, let's say, Microsoft, who has launched an effort to buy directly from BPA, from the grid, but we don't have that kind of influence yet. So we were accompanied in that round by many other entities, including a number of large commercial outfits such as REI and Target and Starbucks. Sound Transit was in there, Western Washington University, and that was just phase one. There was a phase two that sold out within another eight months. So.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes, did you say? Eight minutes it sold out. Sorry. I knew about it for several months, but wow, it sold out very quickly. And that really reflects the pent-up demand for many, many different entities to want to be directly involved in guiding the future of renewable energy. So it's a few more steps closer, even though you don't have that direct line, you are paying for the creation of new generation that's clean versus new generation that's not clean. And that's the way to change the market.
So it's fair to say that people selecting the green option on their PSC bill would be doing as much good as the city?
You could probably say it. You could frame it that way. Yeah. Okay. I think that's fair. And then just to wrap up here, I think everybody knows about our Solarize program this summer. This drew a lot of interest. It's a great way for people on the front lines to do something at their own house. It's very appealing to see that happen and to do it on your own roof. I like to include that slide at the bottom there isn't, and maybe Mayor Bertin has an electricity statement like this now, where for a large part of the year, you don't have any usage at all reflected on your bill. That's because you're serving electricity into the grid, getting credit, and you have no green columns at all. Those green columns on this bill happen in the winter when you draw that credit back out. So when we use that slide in the workshops, that was a real aha moment. This was one of the community volunteers who helped us run the program, and he had installed on his own house and wanted people to see. So we worked again with Spark Northwest, a local nonprofit, helping run these programs. The community selected a newer, smaller, minority-owned installer. I led the workshops and volunteers helped promote the program widely. We had 200 attendees, about half of them got free site assessments. And here's results. We got 45 installations this summer in just six months. That was versus 47 last time we did Solarize. 470 kilowatts of capacity, 12 kilowatts. Four hundred and seventy kilowatts of capacity, twelve kilowatts is about what the average house needs on Mercer Island versus three hundred and thirty-one last time around. People are going bigger now. And just the, the excitement, the buzz around that added another sixteen non-Solarized installations this year as well. And one of the exciting things is we're seeing a lot more people do this to power their electric vehicles, as in that top photo. So you can oversize it to the extent that you can power your house as well as your, your predicted annual mileage needs. So where does that leave us for solar? We have a hundred and eighty-four installations on the island now. That includes the community center and then two hundred kilowatt arrays on two of the schools. Those are large. That's over three hundred panels each. This brings us to fifteen hundred kilowatts of capacity, which is equivalent to about half of one of the, the wind turbines that will be constructed down in Lewis County. Some people ask me, well, how do we compare it to other communities? And here it is. If you look at the per capita kilowatt capacity, we're, we're miles ahead of anybody around us. So there's a lot of enthusiasm regarding this program on Mercer Island. These are data from PSC. And what does this look like? Well, here's how we started in twenty-fourteen. If you can see the little suns there, we had about thirty installations, but we can't find permit info for twelve of them. We, we didn't have such a tight, rigorous permitting system, and some of them may be ten or fifteen years old, just tiny little projects. So this is twenty-fourteen. This is what we added from Solarize. So sorry, before this, this is before twenty-fourteen. Here's Solarize in twenty-fourteen. This is how much we added. We just had a few, three that were not in the program, forty-six in the program. Jump forward to twenty-eighteen, here's what we added from Solarize this year, forty-five and sixteen who did it on their own. And here's the grand total of solar sites all over the island. And you see there's pretty amazing distribution, and maybe no surprise, we'll see these clusters develop in certain neighborhoods where one person does it, and before you know it, half the block has solar because they saw it on their neighbor's house. Yeah. Yeah, no, there's no compatibility between small cells and solar. So we have now ninety-one Solarize installations. So we have, through two city programs for six months each, we added more solar than all of the other solar that exists on the island. So just a real bang for the buck in achieving some energy independence and greening up people's individual power supply. And with that, I'll leave it there with some questions, if you have any.
Counsel, any questions? Ross, that was great. That was quite thorough.
Yeah, thank you, Ross. Very great.
Yeah, thanks for that update. Star, we're just going to shelve and let, let us see how that holds out then?
Yeah, I mean, they, they have, I think intentionally left it pretty vague right now. They're having focus groups and workshops and their release, they have released a beta version for comment, but I, I don't think I'm going to spend too much time focusing in that, and I'm going to see where it ends up.
And did Seattle go from something like number of stars to lead?
Well, they, they have not yet released what a conversion would look like. So if you're five star, does that mean you become platinum lead for cities? We don't know yet. They've kind of grandfathered people in and let them stay as a star certificate, certified community, but I don't know where that crosswalk will be.
Can I just add a little commentary? I'd be remiss if I didn't say there are PSC experts would be happy to come out and talk about the various programs, and there's a huge push for EV adoption and residential business commercial, and everyone's busy with session right now, but there's a whole suite of programs for energy efficiency, for green power, for EVs, like, let some people come out and talk if you guys want more information.
Yeah, it's a great point, and we do have, PSC has been very supportive of all of these programs. And the fact that PSC sent a representative to each of our Solarize workshops really helped get that endorsement from the utility that everyone's going to be working with. Well, the utility's here, that's great, because ultimately they're helping make that final connection, they have to approve it. And having their, their buy-in was, was notable. And then the same with home energy retrofits and EV adoption. Right now Mercer Island has one of the highest per capita EV adoption rates too. We're probably somewhere in the mid-five hundreds of electric vehicles.
Ross, this actually might be a, a lead-in for, for Councilmember Bassett, but you know, as far as the.
Does he need one?
Not, not, not really. No, no, no. You know.
I meant it so far as you were being.
But given what's going on or starting in a session, I mean, based on your observations, I mean, what can cities do in terms of helping push along some of these bills that seem to be aligned with our values or things, positions that we've taken? Is that enough, Bruce, taken away, you know?
Yeah, Bruce, do you want to answer that? Or you can start?
Here comes the soapbox.
So the, yeah, the, the session in Olympia is starting fast and furious. Inslee has offered up a suite of, of bills for consideration, and the legislature is taking those up immediately. So I was there today talking about clean fuel standard, along with Dow and Ryan Colkins from the port, in support of the bill that's there. I'll be back there again Thursday, supporting a, a clean electricity and appliances, I think, a more efficient appliance bill that's in progress. If others would love, like to join me or know more about what's going on, welcome the company, and so the opportunity is there. Invitation is extended.
And maybe I'd just add that what you're seeing this year in Olympia is essentially the governor's best effort at unpacking significant, you know, carbon legislation that didn't pass over the last few years and taking components of that and, and finding other ways to get at the same solutions. So because we weren't able to have a, a carbon tax or a carbon fee over the various years, this is an effort to get at some of the same outcomes without that vehicle.
And I would, I would just add, and doing it in alignment with what's being done in California and Oregon and Hawaii. So at least with the clean electricity, it's, it's following exactly the pathway that those states are already on.
So, so those are things that you, you can do individually, but just to let people know that the Sustainability Committee is always going to be taking a look at some of these issues and obviously coming back to the full council if there's any position.
Yeah, I think, I think there will be, there's no doubt that there will be opportunities for sign-on letters from electeds and from cities organized through the K-4C or otherwise that will be endorsing certain measures as they come out of committee. There's also the opportunity potentially for, you know, there's, there's activists around who are, are seeking to get cities' support of certain measures now. So that's something that will be probably coming to full council, and this is the issue of a hundred percent renewable kind of resolutions that a, a few communities have already passed over the last couple of years. Many people think now's the time for more cities to pass those and kind of help those bills get over the finish line.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ross. With that, we conclude regular business, and we now move on to other business. Are there any upcoming council member absences to report pending our decision on the mid-February council meeting? Okay, great. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the, to Julie for the planning schedule.
Yes, Mayor. So the next time we'll convene is for your annual planning session. This is where we all come together and we try to look ahead and, and really spend some time identifying your goals and work plan. Is currently scheduled for Friday afternoon and all day Saturday, February one and two. Some potential agenda items. Of course, I'd like your input. Of course, our council goals and work plans, so reviewing that and identifying the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty work plan. Naturally, a, a large component of your agenda will be on our financial challenges. We'd like to just provide a quick, in the, in the memo, that will be part of your planning packet, quick update on the fiscal sustainability plan. Really quick update, and I think all, everyone's aware of the, I'm calling it a YFS stakeholder group. I don't know if that's the right terminology, but I'm saying that because it is largely being led by the YFS Foundation President, Jody Chris. Just an update on that. And then the, the staff, we'd like to present to you the additional one point two million in reductions. And then if we can, we're doing some research around what are the trends in property tax levies? So are we seeing specific targeted levies? Are we seeing different funding mechanisms? I know when I talked to peers in King County, there are a number of cities that just stayed away one hundred percent from property tax at all during the last cycle. So we're hoping to pull some information together, just information, just sharing it.
And part of this is based on request from that YFS Foundation group.
Mm-hmm.
So what are the different levers and the different mechanisms and what are the trends that we're actually seeing?
Yeah.
So it's, it's not out of the blue.
And then we really do need to spend some time probably, I'm imagining this is probably discussion one of maybe a several, the Sound Transit settlement dollars, identifying some way to prioritize those dollars. Over the last year, we were able to do a few really low dollar items just to test the market with rideshare and Limebike and those sorts of things. But as you start getting more of those coming to you, how do you discern which, which program would you like to pilot? So our idea would be to present to you some overarching kind of guiding guidelines, have you review it, and kind of just get that conversation started. So those are, right now, the items we've identified. Are we missing anything?
Well, as of tonight's executive session, we didn't get through the material that we had wanted to, so we agreed as a council that we would like to find an hour to continue that conversation. That can either be an additional hour or the extent to which we think it might fit within the current schedule.
Okay.
But I think, Counsel, I, I took away that you felt comfortable with me and Saleem working with Julie and leadership to find out, find the best time for that. Okay.
Okay. Well, that might bleed a little bit then into, if you look on your planning schedule, February fifth. So this has been modified. I would seek your support in having an executive session on the fifth from five to seven PM. Originally, I was thinking it would also be part of finalizing my performance review. So that's one item, roughly about thirty minutes. So if we end up doing an executive session for you to finalize it on the first or second, maybe we could still do that?
It's not instead of, it's in addition to.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, okay. So we, because we didn't finish tonight's work, we would need an additional hour, and then we would still need the time on the fifth.
Yeah. Well, let's talk offline and figure out if that really makes sense there. But regardless of that, I have two additional executive session items I need to discuss with you. One is potential litigation, and another item is a collective bargaining. So I, I will work with Carrie in providing you with a confidential email with some details on that. Okay? So I think two hours is what I'm hoping I can get from you on the fifth.
What about the study session?
What about the study session?
I'm, um. Counsel that?
I'm thinking, yes, I'm thinking if you're, you're thinking of that first last mile, I'm hoping I can wrap that into the Sound Transit piece as part of your planning session. We're in the process of gathering data, having some challenges with getting Uber data, but gathering that data, and I think it could be part of your Sound Transit settlement memo instead on, and presented on Saturday. So in essence, no study session and just a two-hour executive session on the fifth, if that's okay? Just seems okay? Okay. And then the question I proposed was February nineteenth or February twenty-sixth? And I think there was one conflict for Councilmember Bassett on the twenty-sixth was a conflict for him. So, but I, I saw most people saying twenty-six could work. It really, it could be either, really either one. I, I would just say.
So what's the, it's the either or?
It's the either or. I would.
The nineteenth or the twenty-sixth?
Yes. And I would, I just say that because I think I need to have two meetings in February. I was, I was debating whether or not we just lump it all into March one, but, I'm sorry, March fifth, but I really think I need to make sure I, because we have one less meeting in January, I need to have that.
It's midwinter break. I know I will be gone.
So I will be gone too. So that's.
Okay. So, and then I had suggested looking at the twelfth, maybe? Was there any?
The challenge to that is February one, two, five, twelve.
Ah, yeah, okay.
And so.
So I'd suggest you move it, and I will miss the twenty-sixth, and that'll be fine.
Well, Bruce, are you available on the, are you gone for an extended period of time around that date or just that date?
I've gone that whole entire week.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's, it won't work to move it just a little bit. But, I mean, also, I'm looking at the agenda, and it's not looking real heavy that night. So I assume you'll fill in with other things, but at the moment, it's, it's light.
Yes.
Just don't, don't mark me down as missing meetings when you move the meetings so I miss it.
Right.
That's fine.
And, and that is all I have. I don't know if there are any other questions on the planning schedule, but I wanted to try to nail those down with you. So it looks like the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. And then on March fifth, we will go ahead and have that public hearing on small cell or five, yeah, small cell.
I think it had.
I think he, Evan put it up as March fifth. For understandable reasons, it's not printed, but I would assume then.
I thought it was March fifth too. Oh, yeah, so it's.
So I can see why it wasn't published because we hadn't.
Right. I asked Deb not to include it yet.
Okay.
We'll make sure, though, it does get added. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, with that, we're on to board appointments. So Counsel, what you see up here is an outline of what have been the twenty-eighteen City Council liaison assignments, and then another packet that outlines what twenty-nineteen looks like. Now, the delta between the two, of course, is we no longer have the library board. Oh, well, I am as usual one step behind, so there you go. So they've updated. The only thing that I would call out, because I know this is important, it says regional assignments appointed by mayor. That would of course be the mayor in conjunction with the deputy mayor. So the ask on this is that you provide your first three choices and rank them, one, two, and three, and send those to Deb by Friday, January twenty-fifth. And we will try to turn them around right away because we know many of these committees are, are already working. The only thing that I would call out is the ETP, Eastside Transportation Partnership. I'm chair this year, so I'm going to be grabbing one of those spots. All right. Any other comment, question?
Historically, I can't recall. Have we redone assignments every year or did we do it every two years?
Well, I sent out an email today. The suggestion for doing it is because we have a new council member, and I know some of us filled in four times.
And that's fine. I just, you're, you know, shuffling. Dave, you can have Open Space Conservancy Trust back if you'd like.
You could start the negotiations, okay? And I also know some people's work schedules have changed, so, all right. Good. Good. With that, we have council member reports. Wendy, we're going to start with you.
Let's see. First, y'all should put March 24 on your calendars to run or volunteer for the Rotary Half Marathon, 10K, 5K, or Kids Dash. So given that we're not having Leap for Green or Summer Celebration, it might be the big Mercer Island event for the year.
Julie, is that confirmed that there's no Leap for Green or Summer Celebration?
I am just about to send you information about that. Obviously, due to our limited resources, we are having to really cut out and eliminate a number of events. I know there was, you know, about the firehouse munch and that, but what's combined with some of these events that maybe people aren't aware of, in particular, that's a good example of, it's combined, you know, many of you know, with the tree lighting. Well, we've eliminated the tree lighting and the lights in our town center. That's about a $30,000 cost. So it's, you know, so pairing that with the tree lighting kind of is part of the whole event. So it was more than a little bit. But the summary detail that you're going to get is the, I've shared it with you before, financial impact, how many patrons or attendees are impacted, and of course, the summary of the program. You'll see a revised version. There was a phased one where we identified things that you had already approved as part of the 1920 budget. We needed to factor in the biennium, so in some cases, it was only a single year. So it's actually greater. What does that mean? It's about a million dollars in the Parks and Rec budget. Most of that, the lion's share of that, is on the recreation side, recreation and the community center side. We're doing our best to really preserve our public assets, including our parks, and doing our best to maintain the parks maintenance side. At the moment, I think we're able to do that, but it does mean you're going to see more of that fall on the recreation side. Events, events, rec programming, you know, the things that you're already aware of, lifeguards and that sort of thing. It's going to fall on that side.
So are you, this is important because it's kind of, it's been floating around out there, whether or not Summer Celebration and Leap for Green are cut. Are you ready to make that statement tonight or are you still?
Yeah, I mean, it's, and I think you...
This is part of our planning session discussion.
I think you all know this, it's part of your planning session, but the bodies that did those events have left the city. I mean, so it comes down to, I don't really have the people here to do them. And that's largely what's behind it because I tried my best in consulting with the Parks Director. Can we, I was like, can we do a Saturday event? Can it just be at Luther Burbank with fireworks, with some food trucks? And originally, I was thinking we could go down that path, but in consultation with her, if you think about the region, that weekend is very competitive for the food trucks and for the various vendors that we would be wanting to have here. And a lot of those, I didn't know this, but a lot of those vendors prefer a multi-day event. There are some events where in order for us to get a food truck vendor, some cities have to do this, you actually had to pay them to come and work the event. So, because it's just, they need, they want the foot traffic and they want the high volume of people. So doing a multi-day festival, it's enticing to those vendors and the like, but we're just not able to manage it. So, and right now is the time in which we would be letting those contracts, you know, with the bands and all the various vendors that we use for the multi-day festival. And so I think we just recently realized at the end of last year, we just can't make it work.
Well, I can say after being on the Arts Council and having shared staff with the people that organize Summer Celebration, it was a six-month effort to plan. So if I were to ask you a question, if council said, "Put it on," could you? I think the answer you would have to give us would be no, because the planning would have already started by now.
That's right.
It's a half, it's six months of planning for a full-time equivalent to get that thing up and running.
It is a lot of work and I think the estimated hours for just kind of that weekend alone of all staff was like, it costs $44,000.
Yeah, but the run-up in the planning and the provision, you know, contracting with all the agencies, that stuff would have been occurring already.
And so I'm glad you brought up Arts Council. So we're doing our best to preserve those events that the Arts Council currently supports, music in the park, Shakespeare, you know, so we're trying to maintain those events. So... Again, I will make sure you get that. We, if you like, maybe for February 5, I can provide a summary, maybe under the City Manager's Report, a little more information around what's being impacted for you and the community.
That would be great. Thank you. So I'm sorry, Wendy.
So save March 24. It's the big event. Except for the Chambers Art Uncorked event in September, of course. AWC is having their Olympia Days on the 13th and 14th of February. I think some of us are going and the rest of us should consider it, especially new folks. And then KC, the King County Conservation District is undergoing a strategic planning process because there's going to be a new request to renew the funding of $10 per parcel to help support conservation effort around clean water, clean forests, clean farms, backyard erosion and water control and that kind of thing. And then the King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee is working with King County Managers. And there was a training at PIC, I understand, last month, last week, sorry, to sort of train elected officials on their role during an emergency. And there's some modules online that, I'll forward an email to you that Jennifer Franklin confirmed about which modules you can take, they're little quick one-hour, two-hour trainings to sort of understand how incident command is set up during an emergency, what different roles are and the opportunities and challenges for elected officials, knowing their place and knowing how they can help. So look for that in email.
Thank you. Lisa, next time, you may have a Boarder Commission.
Yes, I have nothing for the good of the order today.
Okay, Benson?
I'll be quick. I attended a Mercer Island Chamber of Commerce lunch and Zach Ambrose from Sound Transit was there. He gave a good presentation and an update on the East Link. And City Manager, can I ask, are we going to get an update on Sound Transit on the East Link? Is that scheduled? And if not, I mentioned that Zach Ambrose of Sound Transit did a good presentation and might be worthwhile to have. There's a lot going on. Then, most importantly, I emailed to you folks earlier information regarding the King County Parks Levy renewal. That levy is expected to expire at the end of this year. And right now, the council, King County Executive Dow, Constantine, and the council are looking at a renewal of that levy. And the question is maybe before us, other cities are taking positions on this. Right now, if the levy is just put back up as a status quo, it will raise about $599 million, sorry, $559 million over six years. And of that amount, about 6.5% of that amount, about $36 million, goes to all of the King County cities. The question that's being raised is that they are thinking about doing an enhancement of that levy, which would potentially raise another $200 million, $211 million over six years. And so some cities are asking themselves, well, should we ask the King County Executive and the King County Council to think in terms of allocating more money to King County cities? I got some information, which I think you folks were provided, that Mercer Island pays about $1.8 million in property taxes. That goes to this particular levy and we now receive about $100,000 a year out of that pool of money that is allocated to all King County cities. So just by way of background, the city of Kirkland apparently is writing a letter to Dow asking him to basically increase the allocation to King County cities in the event they decide to go with an enhanced park levy. So I'm sort of asking this council whether or not there's any appetite to draft a similar letter or to direct the City Council, I'm sorry, direct the City Manager to get more information from what the city of Kirkland is doing. So...
Councilmember Wong, so is SEA not taking a position?
I don't think SEA is, at least they did not state that, at least at the PIC. I mean, obviously, Bruce, you're on the board, so I don't know if they are looking at that.
There's been conversation about this, but I don't believe there's been a position taken.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think the person from Kirkland basically gave an update what they're doing. And of course, they had the, they discussed it prior to the PIC meeting. So this is the first time we can talk about it.
Oh.
And, you know, I realize that we don't meet the rest of January, so in order to have any kind of impact, it might be something, I don't know if the people feel comfortable taking a position as far as asking the King County Executive to consider...
This is before he sends his proposal to the county council?
Right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so. I did talk to our Jessie and without speaking for her, I think she's supportive of trying to get more money as part of the allocation.
When I, I spoke to her as well, I can definitely say she wanted more information. I think we would all like more money, but whether or not that means that there's any, where we hesitated to go was any implicit support or overt statement of support at this point because we simply don't have any enough information to know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, typically, I mean, I'm, before you weigh in on something like this, I would prefer that you actually have a presentation on what's being proposed so you can see the various allocations. But I know we're pressed on time on doing that, but, you know, that is something we could...
The materials that were provided provide kind of a...
It has a really good breakdown, yeah.
What the current proposal is, if there's a status quo renewal and also if they're, under the current renewal proposal, it breaks it down.
Are you talking about that?
Yes, that's it.
But it's...
This is the status quo and the stretch. So my thought on this is we're paying 13 cents at the status quo, which is the $5.59, and you add another 5 cents to get the $211 on the stretch. So it's roughly a third. So Mercer Island would pay in another third, so let's say $600,000. So we're paying $1.8 million and we're getting $100,000 back. We pay another $600,000 in and we'll get, I don't know, 40 grand back. You're paying more than you're going to get no matter what. Why not just support, you know, let King County do their own thing? If they're going to spend the money on regional trails and land acquisition, those things are a benefit for the region. Those are all good things. I don't want to take away from that, just to give back to the city.
Sure. And that was the discussion. I mean, a good point. That was the discussion.
We could have our own parks levy and get 100% of it.
And I think the thing that is good about the money that would come out of this particular levy is that there's really no strings attached. I mean, basically, the money comes to the cities and the cities can do what they want with it.
I know. The string for me is that you pay to get it. It's pay-to-play. And if you put 600 in and you get 40 grand back, you know, you would have been better off funding Mercer Island parks with a Mercer Island levy.
Assuming that levy passes.
Assuming the enhancement passes and that the enhancement stays 5 cents, right? I mean, you start putting cities in there and it becomes 6 cents.
Well, the vote is actually, I think, in August. I think it goes to the voters.
I tend to look at the King County Park Levy and say, there's something noble and good about that in their mission. You know, the land acquisition, the regional trails, that is a good deployment of dollars over M&amp;O of existing city infrastructure. Because regionally, that's a resource that's going away. It's getting developed. If we're buying it, acquiring it, making it regional parks and pathways, that, to me, is something you do now. And I don't want to take away from that.
So I know, Bruce, you want to, and I think that would be good, but I would want us to stay away from actually debating the merits of the measure at this point. And I think the direction is whether or not we would want the City Manager to go get more information and come back to us. So, Bruce?
Yeah, I'd say that, I certainly would support that stance. I wasn't under the impression this was actually an August ballot measure. It is, Benson, because I was under the impression that the talk was of the executive actually sort of entering into a conversation with different jurisdictions to try and figure out what the right...
I think the target date is August. I think that's my recollection.
So they're moving awfully fast then if they're trying to hit that.
But even if it's November, I mean...
Yeah, I guess I was, I was under the impression it might not even be this year, that it was, it was next year and they were just trying to put together what it was this year. So, but I could...
It expires this year.
I could, okay. So I could easily be wrong on that.
It funds 80% of the King County Parks and Rec Department. I think it's this year that they need, yeah.
Benson, anything further?
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if there's any will to give direction to the City Manager to gather.
Well, I think the direction was go get more information, particularly on Kirkland.
Oh, do you want more information?
I can always, I would like to know what Kirkland's letter says.
Oh, yeah, we can easily get that for you.
Okay.
But are you wanting to debate it and discuss it and have it as an agenda item?
Not yet.
Probably not.
Okay.
I might be interested, but, you know, let's get more information.
Saleem, anything? Bruce? Dave? Okay, and the only thing from me is ETP. I'm going to pitch somebody to come join me. It's, the agenda's actually looking pretty good this year between whether or not we should have ferries on Lake Washington, e-bikes, park-in, ride reservations, all kinds of exciting transportation issues. And it's on the second, I'm looking at Wendy, second Friday of the month at 7:30, almost exclusively this year, at the Bellevue School District, which makes it far more accessible than Redmond, Clydes Mansion. So with that, I believe we are done and congratulations, Lisa. You made it through your first one.